Okay, if council members could take their seats. We have a lot on the docket tonight. Okay, before we begin, I just wanted to let folks know that the Cunningham Town Board Meeting will be held next week on Monday, December 9th. And then next week, we also will have three hearings. One will be for the Cunningham Township Tax Levy, another for the City of Urbana Tax Levy, and then the third hearing will be related to an annexation. So that's all coming up next Monday. Tonight, we also have three meetings, and so we'll get started as soon as the clerk is ready. Okay? First is a notice of a public hearing of the Urbana City Council. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Marley?
Here.
Next up is public input, and this is a hearing related to the sale of bonds for the Cunningham Children's Home. Is there anyone wishing to address the city council related to this topic? Okay. All right, I'd like to read the notice of the public hearing. This is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 2nd, 2019, at its regular meeting time of 7:00 PM pursuant to the requirements of Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended to consider the proposed issuance by the city of its not-to-exceed $7 million aggregate principal amount of capital improvement revenue bonds, Series 2019, the bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be loaned to Cunningham Children's Home of Urbana, Illinois, an Illinois not-for-profit corporation, the borrower, and will be used to finance and refinance by refunding certain prior obligations, the acquisition, construction, and installation of land, buildings, furniture, fixtures, and equipment for an education and recreation center and a residential treatment center at 1303 North Cunningham Avenue in Urbana, Illinois, hereafter known as the Project, and to pay a portion of the costs of issuing the bonds. The borrower wishes to have the city issue its bonds to finance and refinance the project, including but not limited to fees for credit enhancement or liquidity support for the bonds. The city is a municipality and a home rule unit of local government and is authorized and empowered by the provisions of the Industrial Project Revenue Bond Act 65 ILCS 51174-1 as supplemented and amended from time to time. The bonds will be payable solely out of the revenues and other funds pledged for their payment in accordance with the loan agreement relating to the bonds and is not a general obligation of the city. Okay. And again, I'll call again. Does anyone wish to address the city council for this hearing? Okay. Seeing no public input and no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Next up is a special meeting of the Committee of the Whole chaired by Dean Hazen.
Okay. Urbana City Council Special Meeting Committee of the Whole, and I guess clerk, we need to do another roll call.
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Marley?
Here.
Do we have any public input cards? Nothing?
Not for the council committee. Council committee. Counsel.
Okay. Looks like I need a motion to suspend City Council Rule 2 so that a committee meeting can be held before a city council meeting. Does anybody have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Bill Brown, and second, we'll just toss a coin and go with Jared. Okay, so that has been suspended.
We need a vote.
And?
Need a voice vote.
Need a voice vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, no opposition. This is going to be regarding ordinance number 2019-12-069, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 907 North Lincoln Avenue, Stowe Real Estate Group, LLC, Plan Case 2393 SU-19, Community Development.
Thank you. As Lilly is settling in, I'll just review the reason that you're here. As the city clerk sent an email, I think, to all of you, sort of outlining why we're here, but just to take you back to last spring, we had a couple of discussions about bringing certain plan cases, those that go to Plan Commission or possibly ZBA, zoning board of appeals, to Committee of the Whole for consideration prior to a final vote by city council. So what we're doing here is employing one of the options that was presented to you last spring. That is where we have a special Committee of the Whole meeting. If you choose to have a final vote, you could send it to the city council meeting that immediately follows this meeting. If you choose to instead want to have a further discussion on the item beyond tonight, you could send it to the Committee of the Whole, the regular Committee of the Whole meeting next week. Or if you think that by next week you might be ready for a final vote, you could send it to a special city council meeting next week. And the other option, of course, is to send it to the next regular city council meeting on December 16th, or frankly, anytime thereafter, but I'll just outline those four options. So with that, unless you have a question on this process that we're giving a trying out tonight, if Lilly's ready, I'll turn it.
Can I be recognized?
It's Dean.
Oh, Dean. Looked in the wrong direction. I just want to thank you for placing this, which is rather a more complex issue concerning the Planning Commission and the zoning commission cases, to come to us first in the Committee of the Whole. I think it allows the city and the viewing public a chance to hear the process and the considerations that we're going to be discussing, and we have the option of then to making a final decision in one week if we want, but if we feel like the resolution is an easy one that we can achieve tonight, then we can do it faster. But I think it serves the public and it certainly serves my interests in transparency to allow this to take place this way, so I appreciate it very much.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to try to make this concise but brief. Stowe Real Estate Holdings LLC has applied for a special use permit to allow plasma collection facility at 907 North Lincoln Avenue. Plasma collection facilities are not specifically listed in Table 5-1, Table of Uses in the zoning ordinance, but they are most closely related to medical clinics, which are allowed with a special use permit in the R5 Medium High Density Multiple Family Residential Zoning District. A related request to rezone the property from R5 to B3 General Business was unnecessary for the proposed use and has been withdrawn. To go over a little bit about the site, the site is approximately 2.6 acres. It's located south of King Park on Lincoln Avenue. It is zoned R5 ever since the former senior care center was established in the 1960s. The site was identified as community business in the 2005 comprehensive plan. In 2012, the senior care center was closed. They cited renovations, but it never reopened, and in 2017, the site was sold to, it was, the facility was never reopened, and in 2017 was bought by the current owner with the intention of demolishing the vacant senior care center and selling the site to a developer. Stowe Group, the applicant is a developer. They specialize in building plasma collection facilities. The proposed use of the site is a single-story, 11,000-square-foot medical building. KED Plasma USA would be the tenant for Stowe Group property. The facility would have 42 plasma donation beds, 25 to 30 staff onsite at any one time, and 50 to 60 total staff. Stowe Group anticipates that, on average, 140 to 150 people will donate plasma per The preliminary, sorry, I'm going to go through here. The preliminary site plan, as you can see, is pulled up. We tried to put the site plan in on an aerial and GIS to kind of see where it's reusing the existing access drives. As you can see, the existing driveways remain for automobile access. The main entrance on the east side of the building, close to Lincoln Avenue, with a path connecting the entrance to the sidewalk. Bike parking is near the southeast corner of the building and is connected to the sidewalk as well. The plan includes parking for 81 cars. Based on the proposed use, the zoning ordinance requires one car parking space per 250 square feet of building, which is one of the highest rates required for any use in Urbana. Based on the building size, 45 parking spaces are required. The site plan shows the building has a relatively small footprint on the overall 2.6-acre site with parking and access drives around it covering roughly one-third of the site. Given the location in the neighborhood relatively close to campus, a more compact site with less parking would be more appropriate. In tonight's report, you can see similar land use patterns for more auto-oriented commercial locations further from campus and downtown. The proposed site is well-served by transit and is located in a neighborhood where it's fairly easy for people to walk and bike. Landscaping is not shown on the preliminary site plan, and if approved, the final development must conform to landscaping and screening requirements of the Urbana zoning ordinance. That includes parking lot shade trees, screening buffers from the homes to the east, I mean to the west, and all the other requirements in the Urbana zoning ordinance. Plan Commission recommended that a landscape plan be submitted and adhered to as a condition of the special use permit. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on November 13th at King Elementary School. Four people attended. They asked questions about employment, size of parking area, the number of plasma collection facilities in the area, how traffic would move to and from the site, general information about KED plasma facilities that Stowe Real Estate Holdings has developed. Staff has received no additional public input since that meeting. Plan Commission, on November 21st, voted unanimously 6 to 0 to recommend approval of a special use permit with two conditions to city council. No members of the public spoke at that hearing. Staff had recommended a condition to cap parking at 60 spaces. However, the Plan Commission felt the developer may need all the proposed parking during peak times. And with that, I'm going to go through the requirements for a special use permit briefly. The proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. Property is very convenient along major arterial roads less than two miles from the I-74 highway interchange and is half a mile from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign campus. There are approximately 800 residences within a half-mile of the site. The location is well-served by transit, bicycle infrastructure, and walking distance to Crystal Lake Park, the University of Illinois, downtown Urbana, and the Carl Foundation and OSF Hospital campuses. Property is in a prime location to serve many communities, but the auto-oriented style of development may make it more difficult for people to walk and bike to the proposed development. The applicant indicated to staff that they are interested in building a bus shelter or pad on Lincoln Avenue in front of the proposed building, and they have reached out to CU MTD to discuss that possibility. An additional condition tonight has been proposed, if council chooses to approve the special use permit with conditions. The second criteria for a special use permit. The proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be detrimental to the district of which it shall be located. Use is compatible with the size and traffic of Lincoln Avenue and is similar to nearby medical and related uses. The future land use for the area is identified as community business, which calls for development that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and that is accessible to people walking, biking, and taking transit, in addition to those arriving by car. The site plan makes some accommodations for transit riders with an area identified as a potential bus shelter, and it places the building close to Lincoln Avenue to make it more accessible for people walking to the site. The proposal is not likely to be injurious or detrimental to the public welfare, as leaving the site vacant would likely be more harmful to the neighborhood since vacant parcels can be overgrown, attract vandalism, and become eyesores. The third criteria. The proposed use conforms to applicable standards and preserves the essential character of the district. The R5 Medium High Density Multiple Family Residential Zoning District is mainly designed to be for residential character, however, medical uses are allowed with a special use permit. The proposal generally conforms to regulations, standards, and character of the R5 district. City council, if sent to city council tonight, would have the following options with this case. The first one would be to approve the ordinance with no conditions, to approve the ordinance with conditions, or deny the ordinance. At their November 21st meeting, Plan Commission voted with 6 ayes and 0 nays to forward the special use permit request to city council with the recommendation of approval with the following conditions. One, that the applicant submits a landscape plan prior to issuance of any building permit to ensure that proposed landscaping and screening conforms to the City of Urbana zoning ordinance standards for screening and required landscape buffers. Two, that the development shall be constructed in general conformance with the attached preliminary site plan and approved landscape plan. Additionally, staff recommends a third condition, as I mentioned earlier, that the applicant provide a bus shelter along Lincoln Avenue if CU MTD determines a shelter would be appropriate for this location. Staff likewise recommends approval, and the applicant is here tonight.
Any questions for city staff? Eric?
Who passes on the landscaping plan?
Right, so there, all the regulations in the landscaping plan is in the zoning ordinance, and so that would be building and planning, building permit review.
Okay, so it would be staff of building and permit review by staff. Okay.
Mary Alice?
So there were some comments in the Plan Commission minutes that said that the Public Works was looking at the required for drainage. Is there an update on that?
Yeah, so Public Works, as you can imagine, is a little short-staffed right now, and they have not made an official determination on the required drainage or stormwater management plan that would be required in our zoning ordinance. From a preliminary look at the, from Public Works, I did get from Justin Swinford that it would be very hard for us to trigger that, and there might have been some confusion by the applicant's architect and city staff as far as the zoning ordinance, what it requires, because we require the certain amount of square footage of more impervious area for development. The site previously, its previous use was very developed, and actually, the proposed development would have less of a footprint than the previous site. So the senior care center that was formerly on the site was a much more substantial building, and the parking lot area plus that senior care center would be what we would determine the difference to trigger stormwater management.
So does that mean that between the parking lot and the building structure, if you add those combined, that it is a smaller amount of impervious than the previous?
Yeah, and it would be, according to Justin Swinford, it would be difficult to trigger at that site in that location, it would be difficult to trigger really serious stormwater management.
Okay, I'm sorry if I'm being dense here, so I just want to, I just want to understand. It looked to me from the picture that there was more parking for the nursing home, although it's distributed a little bit differently here. Obviously, the building is smaller, so I'm just trying to figure out, square footage, are we adding, subtracting the amount of land, less or more drainage?
So actually, the senior care center had less parking than what's proposed. If you can see, and it's difficult with the proposed site plan over here, and I can maybe pull up really fast what the former senior care footprint looked like, but this, all of this and all of this was the former care center. It all kind of looks gray on an aerial photo, so it might be a little bit difficult. Here would be where the senior care center's parking is. In the proposal, you can see in the blue here, that's where we're seeing the new parking and the footprint. That space, and there was a chart in the staff report of how much land that kind of covered, lot coverage, and it's 15% of the lot would be covered, and then 35% of the lot would be covered with this proposal. 50% of the lot, in essence, would be open space. Okay.
I think the question, a couple of questions that I have. Medical waste, what is, how is that going to be taken care of? Anybody? No?
I would defer to the applicant. And they're coming up in a moment to make a statement, I believe, so perhaps you could hold that question until they do that?
Okay. Then my other question is, because what I've, what I noticed and what I thought of when I saw the picture, at least the one that we got in our packet, it seems that the parking or the area is going to be close to backyards of single-family homes?
Yeah, and that would, that would be screened in our zoning ordinance.
Okay, and also, is there going to be some kind of soundproofing, so to speak, mainly, and I ask that because they're going to be full-size semi-trucks going to pick up or drop off plasma, I'm not sure which one, which those can be kind of noisy, and whereas before, when Fontana was there, you didn't have an apartment building there, you know, the single-family homes are still there. But I just want to make sure that the people that are living in that area are not going to be disturbed with extra noise coming from semi-trucks and such.
So staff did a little bit of research, and as far as the deliveries that were going to be had at the site, and the applicant stated in our questions that they were looking at one pickup for plasma collected and then another drop-off for deliveries for soft goods, and then there'd probably be a trash removal dumpster truck like once a week.
Okay. And I'll wait for the other question I had, which was about medical waste, how that was going to be handled. Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, I know, and the comp plan designates this area as, or the future land use map as community business. Would that normally be B2 or B3 then, if it was going to be rezoned?
Yeah, if it was going to be rezoned, B1, B2, B3. I think the future land use designation talks more about how it would relate into what the community is really looking for, and so that was, that's definitely included in here, but it's kind of meant to be kind of stepping into.
And do you know what makes, I know for, we have special uses for a lot of different things. I think daycare is, can't think what else, especially in residential areas, it seems like we have some special uses that have to be approved. What makes a medical clinic stand out that would need a special use? I mean, most of these special uses have some impact beyond the ordinary. It seems like this is fairly ordinary retail-type business traffic. Why is it a special use?
Would you like me to tackle that?
Sure.
You're right, so a special use typically has some sort of issue that one would want to mitigate or at least consider mitigating, and I think in this case, a typical medical clinic might have a lot of traffic, a lot of in and out, because you've got people that have appointments every 30 minutes, let's say. That would be my best guess.
Okay. Thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah, I did have a conversation with Representative from the Stowe Real Estate Holdings LLC this afternoon by phone, and I learned a couple of interesting things, and one of the things I'd like, that was commented, was that the requirement for creating a detention pond, which might be one abatement for service runoff, wasn't required for this because they're just under the number of car slots, apparently, that's what I was told. Now, maybe you want to comment on that, but I did recommend that they consider natural gardening, the rain gardens, and other things, I think I actually mentioned in the conversation in the Planning Commission discussion, so, and I understand that they, maybe when they come up and talk to us, they'll comment about their interest in that as a mitigation feature for that. And then also, I'd like them to, when they come up, to explain a little bit about their, the business really of blood plasma and how they're involved in it. It's not exactly what I would have imagined, and so I think it'd be interesting to learn and everybody to understand what they're doing and what their, what their goals are.
Any other questions for staff? Mary Alice?
My final question has to do with the building, excuse me, and how close it is to the sidewalk. I know that that was staff's recommendation to pull the building up closer to the street. So I always have difficulty reading the numbers of feet in these, in the pictures, they're kind of obscure. So can you tell me how far away the sidewalk is from the street?
Yeah, so it's about 20 feet or so from the sidewalk. From the street, it's about 30 feet. It is hard to see, but if you can look at it and you see a dashed line, that's 15 feet from the property line. And the sidewalk, except for one portion of the northern part of the parcel, the sidewalk stays pretty clear from the property line. It's just right on the property line. If you get a little bit farther north on the property line, that's why you can see the dashed line fairly clearer than other things on this map. You can see the dashed line jogs a little bit. That's jogging seven feet. So the building is still much more set back than what our requirements are for residential use, so it's about additional 10 to 15 feet. The recommendation was really, one thing was, from the recommendation was because it's matching our comprehensive plan. The second reason was a concern for, as mentioned in our comprehensive plan, to tie into pedestrian and bicycle traffic, make it more active and easier to access. So staff recommended that to, again, match our comprehensive plan and then also try to make it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly.
So at the end of the day, what is the minimum distance between any portion of the building and the street?
Yeah, the minimum distance, it looks like from this map, would be 25 feet.
And is that from the property line or the street, just to make sure that we're?
Just the street. Yeah, the street, and that's.
Okay, because the setback requirement's 15, right?
From the property line.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I think we've got a couple of public input cards. Correct time, Mr. Clerk. Scott, is it Stoke? I assume you want to speak. It doesn't indicate that on here, but. And, seat with him. And Matt Dearing.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Matt Dearing, excuse me. I'm with the Meyer Capel Law Firm in Champaign, and I have with me tonight Scott Stow from the Stow Development Group, our client and proposed developer. I'll make my comments short and essentially say that we do appreciate the staff and the Planning Commission's approach and analysis and consideration of this matter, and the decision to recommend approval, even with the three conditions, including the one proposed tonight. Essentially, we agree with the recommendation. We appreciate the recommendation, and we would urge the council to go forward accordingly. With that said, I have Scott here this evening, and I'm sure you're more interested in hearing from him, so I will end and open it up for any questions that you all have.
Hello again. Hello again, Mr. Stow. Stow. My question was about medical waste and how that was going to be dealt with, because it's not, I know it's not just the blood products that will be tossed, but it also needles, tubes, yeah, all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely, Abby, and I can actually address your sound question as well, if you'd like, but to start with biohazards, we call them. So in each facility, these are all.
all regulated highly by the FDA, as well as the EMA, which is the European FDA, as well as the German Health Authority, they have very strict requirements about disposal of waste.
Not the EPA, too?
I do not believe so.
Oh, my.
Each, there's a biohazard room that has to remain locked, not open to the public, only the manager of each facility. Each biohazard room has to have a vacuum with regard to HVAC, so that no contaminants come back in to the rest of the facility. Biohazards are then picked up, they have to have a door to the outside of the facility, biohazards are picked up, just like they're picked up at other medical facilities, hospitals, urgent care facilities, on a bi-weekly basis, so every two weeks. That's, yeah, so that's how they're...
So would those, would those biohazards be going into our local landfills, or...?
They're disposed of with...
Incinerator?
Yeah, as the same as any other biohazards would be, I'm not 100% sure how that process, I'm not as much on the waste management side as I know about plasma collection.
Okay, and then the other question about a sound barrier sorts for the neighborhood around?
Yeah, so Lily touched on it a little bit, in terms of deliveries, we would have one plasma pickup, which is a freezer truck, come once a month. In terms of deliveries, these are typically done by smaller box trucks for soft goods, needles, tubes, that are used for each donation, and those come once every two weeks. So, three total pickups or drop-offs, with the exception of trash or the biohazard waste, would happen on a monthly basis. I can tell you right now that it's, it's a lot less disruptive than a lot of other uses, I can imagine that, you know, an ambulance coming and going from a senior care facility would be much more disruptive than the traffic that will go through this plasma collection facility.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
So, one of the justifications for having the increased number of parking was due to the amount of staff, I think with turnover, so approximately 25 to 30 people for each shift, so 60 potentially over a half an hour period, is that correct?
So it's, it's a little bit less than that, so if you have 25 on staff, typically you'll have a turnover of about 15, so, you know, really in that 40 range on a staff level, as well as, you know, catching rush times, a lot of folks, these operations usually open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to catch the before or after-work crowd, where there typically are rushes, so it's really to accommodate, the increase in parking is to accommodate those rush periods, and it will, having enough parking will allow people to park onsite, as opposed to parking on, say, the cul-de-sac that runs into, on Borders King Street, or King Park.
Wash your drive.
So that's, that's really, this is really our sweet spot for the amount of parking that we need, and we've built several of these facilities, obviously with the size of the site plan, we could have asked for more parking, but we felt that this was adequate.
So I think that you have 42 beds, if I remember correctly, 41, 42, and there was some discussion about the surge times?
Yes, ma'am.
And that there might be wait times, so to speak?
Sure.
So I'm wondering if you have any kind of estimates in terms of, you know, generally speaking, from 7:00 to 9:00, we might have 10 people waiting, I'm just trying to get an estimate of who's high frequency.
Sure. No, absolutely, that's a great question, so to understand wait times, you have to understand the process a little bit, so if you're a new plasma donor coming in to donate, you have to be screened for a full physical, so your first donation, including the physical and the donating period, might be three hours. Now, if you're a return customer or a repeating donor, you don't have to go through a physical as long as you've had one at the facility within the past year, so that process only takes between an hour to an hour and a half, 60 to 90 minutes, once you've already gone through the physical. So if there's a situation where you have a lot of new donors coming in, sometimes there will be waiting for the physician to give them their physical, so on and so forth.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I was one of the four visitors that talked to you at the open house, or whatever, the public open meeting. It was interesting learning more about the plasma collection business and how it's used, and that people can make money, basically, by giving plasma fairly often, and being in a student community, and I know a lot of students use that as extra income, but as far as the parking goes, the beds are all pretty close, I saw a picture in here, they're like four or five feet apart, so it's not exactly like a medical clinic where you have individual exam rooms, so I can understand where we may have requirements of parking space for every 250 square feet of a medical clinic, this is a more dense use of the building, so it would probably make sense to have requirements for a smaller amount of the building, because you're going to have more people occupying the smaller area of the building. So I guess my question, first of all, is I think I remember you saying you can give up to twice a week, the plasma, is that right?
Correct, so as opposed to whole blood, where, as many of you might know, you can donate once a month, plasma is 96% water, 95, 96% water, that the red blood cells float in, so when you give, when you donate plasma, they take the red, the whole blood out, separate the water, or plasma, from the red blood cells, and put the red blood cells back into your body, so you don't have that effect of being woozy, or have, you know, some level of recovery time as you would if you donate whole blood. So to answer your question, that is correct, you can donate two times within a seven-day period, with virtually no side effect. A lot of times, you might feel a little bit dehydrated after, I believe every donor at a KET plasma receives a Gatorade, or if they would like a bag of saline to replenish the water that has been taken from their body upon request.
Yeah, a friend of mine just said he donated for the first time last week at a different plasma place in town here, so you have some ways to keep a list to make sure somebody doesn't go across town and give to another place, three or four, you know, go back and forth, and between the two of you give three or four times in a week?
Yeah, absolutely, that's one of the more complex aspects of a plasma donation facility, is the directory, all these plasma centers, while they may be competition, all really have to talk to each other, so that people are not donating more often than they're allowed to, based on FDA standards, so they're very vigilant about making sure that that does not happen, making sure that each donor is healthy before donating, so, yeah.
If you sign, if you start giving at one clinic, can you switch to a different clinic? Are you kind of locked into that one clinic for a while?
Absolutely, you can switch to a different clinic, as long as you don't donate with more than you're allowed to, two times within a seven-day period, you're absolutely free to, to go to other clinics around town, although you do have to live within a certain radius of where you donate, I believe it's 30 miles.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah, I appreciated the comments that were brought forward, that your company, Scott, would be trying to keep whatever large trees are already on the property, if you can, in the footprint of the building and the layout.
Sure, absolutely. Along Lincoln, I was struck by, you know, there's a lot of trees lining in between the two driveways that are existing, the two curb cuts, so we wanted to make sure to keep those, absolutely. I think it adds to the streetscape of Lincoln Avenue, it's a beautiful street, as you're coming, you know, I come from Cincinnati, so when I get off at 74 and go south on Lincoln, it's really, you know, what you see, the street you go down before you get to campus. As you move back onto the site, I would say that there are three trees that are really, in my opinion, are gorgeous hardwood trees that we want to save. There's two walnut trees towards the back of the site, as well as a large sycamore tree, that is, if you see on the northwest corner of the building, and obviously the site plan might be a little bit off the way it's laid out on the aerial view of the map, but we plan on keeping that sycamore tree in the landscape space in between the pavement. I'm a big fan of hardwood trees, and in my opinion, we can't afford to lose many more than the beetles and bad things that are going around, killing our ash trees and our walnut trees to begin with, so I'm a huge proponent of landscaping and obviously screening the houses to the west of the site, as well as keeping as many trees as possible on the site, after looking at it initially, I think the only one that'll come down is a cedar tree, which, to the Midwest, is an invasive species, so...
Yeah, it's very much appreciated, those thoughts are certainly supported by me. The other thing I found very interesting was, in your business plan, what I learned was that the plasma doesn't really stay local, it's not necessarily destined for our local hospitals, you want to explain a little bit about how the collection product will eventually be used?
Yeah, absolutely. The plasma process is fairly complicated, so I'll try and keep it brief, I know you guys have a lot of your agenda this evening. A lot of your immune system lives in your plasma, so when you manufacture these lifesaving therapies at the final stage, you often pool typically between 3,500 and 5,000 liters of plasma into one vat, and as you centrifuge these out, there's different factors that come out, factor 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, hemophilia patients use factor 8, it's a clotting factor, and at the bottom, the most, how should I say, popular or used for the most wide array of treatments is called IVIG, which is an immunoglobulin, which basically has the immune system of about 35 to 5,000 different people. So, this plasma has to be taken to a, we call them a fractionation facility, the one for my client is located in Long Island, where these drugs are manufactured, these manufacturing facilities are usually about a half of a billion dollars to build. Once the final products are billed and filled into the bottles, then they are distributed to hospitals throughout the United States, sometimes even the world. What I'll say about blood or plasma leaving the community, is if any of you have donated to Red Cross in your life, Red Cross takes your whole blood, actually centrifuges it off the plasma, and sells it to plasma companies, not unlike my client, so that's kind of in a nutshell how the process works for manufacturing plasma. Some of the most common uses would be a tetanus shot, one very close to my heart is, if you've ever had anyone that has had cancer and undergone radiation and chemotherapy, chemotherapy virtually completely wipes out your immune system, you're very susceptible to infection, viruses, so on and so forth, and the immunoglobulin basically replaces your immune system in your body as you're on your going, these treatments that can be very harmful to the natural biology of your body, so...
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Does anybody want to entertain a motion? Mary Alice?
I will make a motion that we move ordinance number 2019-12-069, ordinance approving a special use permit at 907 North Lincoln Avenue, Stott Real Estate Group, Plan Case 2393 SU19, to the council meeting immediately following us today, with a recommendation for approval.
A second?
Okay, so a motion by Mary Alice, and second by Bill Brown.
With the three conditions that are already listed.
With the three conditions that are already listed. Okay, it has been moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Brown, with three conditions that have been listed for ordinance number 2019-12-069, with a recommendation to go to city council immediately after this meeting, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Thank you for your consideration this evening and your time.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have anything to say before we close this session? Then we are hereby adjourned. Well, thanks.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Urbana City Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from previous meetings of November 12th, which was a public hearing, November 18th, and November 25th, which was a special meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dean, any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Good, no additions. I don't believe we have any presentations tonight, so we'll go to public input. So I have a number of cards from the public who wish to speak before the meeting, a couple of people didn't indicate when, and I'll assume you want to go before the meeting, and if that's not the case, we can, we'll go at the time of the topic. Shelley Masser?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk about the trouble in the schools and the proposal to bring police in to help make the schools safe. I've been watching our communities struggle with this for a long time, in the 90s, I wrote for the Octopus around the consent decree in Champaign, and in that context, I went to diversity training in both Urbana and Champaign, and watched in shock as trained facilitators delivered poignant consciousness-raising information to an audience of teachers who were divided. Those who already knew the gist of what they had to say listened, and those who were having none of it, sat back, graded papers, rolled their eyes. It was shocking, and I realized then, and continue to realize, that multiculturalism, genuine multiculturalism, is really rare. It takes a constant dedication, commitment, to ask people who have been trained, ask people who have been successful, who ask people who have loved different populations from the inside out for their best practices. You can't impose programs on it, and you certainly can't get there bringing untrained police into the schools. It has to be with a commitment on the city level, on the school district level, to constantly putting this elusive goal in front of us. A few weeks ago, I watched an incident on the streets of Urbana where two children, two black kids, they were 10 and 11 or so, were surrounded by three cop cars with their lights going, and two policemen, the little boys were sitting on the street, under the gaze of all of this firepower, asked a policeman what was going on, he said, "Well, a neighbor..." the policeman what was going on, he said, "Well, a neighbor called the men to, as being up to no good." Well, fine. The point is, any ten-year-old, any nine-year-old surrounded by that kind of negative attention is, it's, it's not good. Kids are sensitive. The police probably knew that and felt that too, but people don't know how to communicate. They don't know how to teach. They don't know how to express resistance. If a child senses that someone doesn't like them, they're going to respond defiantly. I don't know how to deal with that. I couldn't deal with that with my own children. But there are people who know, and we need to keep it constantly under, under our commitment to, to get help, get the communication that we need. Final, final story is that recently, a longtime staff person in Urbana retired. And on Facebook, which is, by the way, the new community center for many of us, um, it became clear that he had contempt for the morality, contempt for the communication mechanisms, contempt for the morals of the kids that he had been teaching for twenty, over twenty years. These kinds of things are present, and we need to talk about them in ourselves. And I'm not sure that policemen are the, are the answer. It certainly would depend on the policeman. My God, does it depend on the policeman. And it certainly would depend on constant communication and feedback, back and forth, and constantly being willing to, to be aware of when we're blocking, when we're resisting, when we're listening, when we're afraid, when we believe that something is going to dumb down or make us unsafe. I'm talking a lot of, you get the point, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Dan Bechtel.
Good evening. Um, I'm Dan Bechtel. Uh, I'm a, I'm a math teacher at Urbana High School and have been at the high school for the last eighteen years and actually have been teaching in Urbana School District for the last twenty-three. Um, I kind of felt that Shelley spoke to, uh, Facebook, and actually I think that was kind of an impetus for me wanting to come to this today. Um, I'm friends with a lot of former students, and I think, once the conversation about getting police in the schools started, I, I think there was a lot of misinformation out there about what that looks like from the ground level. And, and what I wanted to do is just have an opportunity to talk for a second about what it looks like at Urbana High School and, and in being there over kind of a long period of time, what the difference has been since we have had a dedicated police officer there at the high school. So I just wanted to sort of speak to that a little bit. Um, specifically, what happens kind of on the day-to-day. Uh, and I recognize my time hasn't started going, so I, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't take too much time. Apologize. I saw the thing starting moving before, and I'm like, that's what I'm gonna have to see when I speak. I don't, at any rate. Um, basically, in being in a classroom, you've got a lot of stuff to deal with, with a lot of kids. You've got to teach a lot of things, and you have discipline, things that you have to deal with as well. And I think that everybody's been in a place where a kid's gotten in trouble, you've had to manage that situation in a classroom, and then sometimes had to get other people involved to take care of a disciplinary situation. From when I've been at the high school from the beginning till now, what I do looks absolutely nothing different than it did back then. Um, if something happens, I will talk to a kid. I'll send a kid to there. Used to be dean, now it's a student interventionist, and we deal with the situation the way the disciplinary, disciplinary plan is involved. We don't involve the police officers in any way, shape, or form. That is not our role as teachers, and it's not their role as those, as the resource officer to come in and do anything. It has not looked any different since we've had people in the building, from my perspective as a teacher. And I think the part that's important to sort of educate on is, we've had school resource officers since I got there. That doesn't seem to be something that's in the offing to change. It's just the matter of whether or not we should have somebody that's dedicated for the high school and somebody that's dedicated for the middle school. And if I'm wrong in that, I certainly, I certainly want to know that. But I, I guess what I wanted to speak to is the idea that having somebody that is dedicated just to the high school has been a real help and resource for the students, for the staff, and for the administrators, and the parents, since it's happened, from my perspective. Um, I, I can say very clearly, having Darren in the building, and I, I call our, our resource officer Darren because I actually had him as a student his junior and senior year when he was at the high school, um, has been really helpful. Um, and particularly, I actually, a couple of weeks ago, was the, the victim of an aggravated assault. And this isn't the first time it's happened since I've been at the high school. Actually, the last time that that happened was about fifteen years ago. And it was a similar situation. Um, there was a student that was trying to get into a classroom that was not supposed to be there. Uh, fifteen years ago, they were trying to get in to go after a teacher, and I didn't want them to, so I stood in the way and told them not to. A couple of weeks ago, was a student that wasn't supposed to be there that was trying to get into my classroom, who I asked to leave repeatedly and refused to do so, and, and threatened me at that point in time. Now, I'm clearly here, and I have no problems with me. This was taken care of by our administration and our deans. I, I got the student to leave. Everything was okay. But the problem is that in a situation like that, as a, as a teacher, that's none of our field of expertise. We have no idea what to do in that situation, other than, let's get somebody here to help out. Let's try to make sure everything's in the right place. And none of us want to be in a place where we can say, "Oh, well, you need to get out of here. You need to le-" It's just, please let me teach my class. Please let me go to the next step." And this is the difference between what's happened, what happened after that fifteen years ago and now. I know we had a school resource officer then. Fifteen years ago, from when that incident occurred, to when I went to the expulsion hearing, to when I testified in court, I didn't talk to anybody about this. I got a subpoena. I didn't know what I was supposed to do with that. I was a lot younger and had an opportunity to say, "Uh, what do I do?" And somebody tried to help me, but there wasn't really a whole lot of people to guide me along. A couple of weeks ago, I said, "I don't know what to do, but get this kid out." When they got out, an administrator asked me a couple of questions, and I said, "Look, I, I don't know the right step to take here. What should I do?" And they said, "Would you like to talk to our resource officer?" I said, "Yeah, I'd love it if I could talk to Darren." Darren came up, answered a lot of questions, asked me a lot of questions, told me what the next steps were gonna be. I didn't have to make a decision as a teacher, because I had a resource, which is in the name, to be able to help answer my questions, to de-escalate me, to talk to the student about what was going on, and to take the next steps. Now, at this point in time, the courts have gotten involved, but that is something that followed a situation where everybody knew what was going on, as opposed to having no idea. And from my perspective as a teacher, what having a school resource officer there allows us to do is to feel like we have somebody to answer our questions. And it's the same for students and for parents. And the idea of having somebody that is divided between two schools with wide variety of needs, to try to serve both of them at the same time, in addition to actually having a detective's course, a caseload as well, it, it seems insane to ask one person to do all of that and to do it effectively. And that's, I think, the reason why I want to support the idea of having this, is not because I want more police in schools doing more stuff. That's kind of always been there. I just would like somebody to be there as a true resource to the people there, to make sure we know what to do and to de-escalate the situations when something occurs that's not great, but also to help when people have questions and when people have needs. So, thank you very much for giving me the time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Al, next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Busy day. Uh, hi, my name is Alan Axelrod. I live at eight one four Sunset Drive. Uh, I first want to caution with anecdotes that talk about the need for school resource officers, in particular emphasizing that there was not a need expressed there. That was a successful anecdote with an existing resource. Now, the main thing is, this is a lot of money, cumulative between multiple governments that we're talking about. And it's invested totally in one strategy, one mode of operation. We have to be very confident in that mode of operation, to invest all those resources without considering or investing further in additional strategies for mitigating the kinds of interactions that we're seeing due to unmitigated trauma, due to poverty. How many rich kids are engaging in the kind of conduct that we're concerned about? There's a broader concern here. Thank you.
I have a card from Benjamin Theobald, who does not wish to address the council, but wishes to go on record as being opposed to the school resource offer program intergovernmental agreement. Stuart Levy or Levy?
Thanks. I'm Stuart Levy of eleven oh eight Foley in Champaign. Um, and I, I'm here to talk about the proposal for, uh, putting over the long term more police in the schools. Um, I guess, I was concerned last week, um, let's see, I'm, I'm very grateful to you, Mary Alice, for having brought up the, uh, the ProPublica study of isolation in the schools. And I'm, I was glad to hear that several people were talking about, uh, the need for, uh, whoever is in the schools to have adequate training, and that there is some provision for the, the so-called resource officers to have, uh, to have such training. Um, but one thing that it really concerned me not to hear, I left about quarter past ten, but, so I was here for most of the, that discussion, um, was I, I didn't, I don't think I heard anybody here really ask whether it's even a good idea, as many of the speakers in the audience were saying, whether it's even a good idea to be putting more police in the schools. You know, I heard a lot about, some comment for the need of it. I heard some comment about, you know, mitigation of potential problems, but I didn't hear anybody say, "Is this really what we want?" Um, you know, even if, as I heard at one point, there is some money available for, um, that could be used for the purpose. If it's not a good thing to do, you shouldn't do it. Um, my, one of my cousins is a social scientist, and some years ago, she studied the problem of, uh, fights on, um, at recess time. Because people at the time were talking about saying, "Well, you know, if recess is really dangerous, we should stop doing it." So she was looking into the causes of, causes of those fights. Um, and it wasn't a matter of, you know, the kids weren't sure whether they were gonna be punished, and so they were, they would just wantonly go and start fights. Um, there was a structural issue. So, within the school, the, the adults were clearly in charge, and, and fights were unusual. During the bulk of the recess time, uh, the kids were in charge, not, the adults were not. But they sort of knew, you know, what the, what the pecking order was. Um, the really dangerous time, the time that fights would start, was at the very end of recess, during the time of transition, when, uh, the kids weren't really in control anymore, but the adults hadn't really taken control. And so, the concern was not, you know, some sort of, sort of wanton student-ness, wanton young-people-ness, but, um, but a structure, a lack of structure. And so, you know, several people during, uh, the discussion last week suggested that what's really needed more than bringing police, uh, over the long term, bringing more police into the, police presence in the schools, would be just bringing more adults into the schools, having more adults around. And there are a lot of adults who would be less expensive to bring into the schools than police would be, and also, less threatening. When, when I see a police officer, it doesn't really worry me, but I know that there are a lot of people, including people who come to the IMC, where I spend a lot of time, who are, are really made very uneasy by the presence of a police officer. And so, you know, if you're trying to add structure to the schools in a way that will calm people and make it less likely for them to fight, you don't want to bring in people that the, uh, that the students in the school are gonna be afraid of or angry at. Um, I'll stop with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Teresa Sweeney.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Sweeney. I am a community member. I have two UHS students, and I'm a nationally certified school psychologist. So I printed and shared a paper copy of the petition in support of the SRO program and the intergovernmental agreement between the school board and the city council, as well as the ninety-four names who signed the petition. The ninety-four parents, community members, and staff members who signed, did the, did so in less than twenty-four hours. The petition is still open, and the updated numbers will be shared with the Board of Education at the meeting tomorrow evening. The petition reads as follows: Dear members of the Urbana School District Board and of Education and the Urbana City Council, it has come to our attention that USD one sixteen and the Urbana City Council are in the process of approving a school resource program intergovernmental agreement that formalizes the current staffing level of the one SRO at the Urbana Middle School and one SRO at the Urbana High School. We, the undersigned, support ratifying this agreement to have one full-time SRO at each of the secondary schools. We urge one sixteen Board of Education and the Urbana City Council to vote in favor of the intergovernmental agreement with the proposed amendments. And the petition was supported by the following stakeholders. And like I said, as of about ten minutes ago, it was at ninety-four people signing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Laura Wells or Well.
Hello. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for their time and make sure my clock gets started, because I do have lots to say. Uh, I'm an Urbana native. I was born at Provena, that is now, uh, OSF. Um, I've been an employee for the Park District on and on for more than half of my life now. Altogether, I've worked almost fifteen full years in childcare for the Urbana Park District. Uh, I'm also a Urbana voter. I have lived in Urbana my whole life and have happily voted for all of the members sitting here, and hopefully in the interests of everyone sitting in this room. I'd like to say that through the Urbana Park District, I currently get to work after school at both Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School. Um, the students there, and I feel like I shouldn't even have to say this out loud, but they are kind, brilliant, uh, wonderful, and important, and being deeply underserved at this point in time. First of all, I just want to go straight into it. Armed police presence doesn't work. Uh, Congressional Resource Service did an inconclusive study that wasn't able to show any benefits there. The school survey on crime and safety from twenty sixteen was also similarly inconclusive, and said that at no point did the drop in criminality correspond to having police presence at school. I would like to say, the other sources that I have for this are more than widely available. If anyone is interested, it's Counselors Not Cops, has a lot of free resources. But I'll just point out that that includes the New York State Permanent Judicial Commission on Justice for Children, our very own consortium of Chicago School Resources, Justice Quarterly, which is a law, uh, periodical, the book Discipline in an Urban High School, as well as the book The Worst of Both Worlds, describing how hard it can be for our students to be in, uh, schools like that. And finally, the Bureau of Justice Statistics. So, I would encourage you to look at the information that is actually available on any sort of conclusive positive change that arms officers will actually impact on our school. So that's the whole doesn't work part. I also think it's absolutely irrational and irresponsible use of our funds. In a U.S. Department of Education study in twenty sixteen, we found that in the last thirty years, per student, education at a state and local level has decreased by twenty-eight percent. Now, that is national level, not Illinois or Urbana, but it's disturbing, given that our spending on corrections increased by forty-four percent. These are kids who have no art classes. I teach art after school. I'm very lucky to get to do that. These are kids who have no history classes, no home ec, kids that go home hungry many nights, kids that some of these fights start over, whether or not they even get extras for lunch or dinner, that we're providing for free because they're not getting fed at homes. These are low-income students. A lot of the students that I work with in particular are black, Hispanic. Many are queer, some are trans. And yes, by middle school and high school, they do know that about themselves, and they already feel like they're wrong. Like they're not being seen, and they certainly want- Like they're not being seen, and they certainly won't be heard. My final point is, to me, the most important point, and somebody was very nice to just point it out. Is it right? It's unethical, unjust, and against the values of our schools, our city, and our nation. Now I actually know the educator from UHS, I actually am a huge fan of him, I have nothing but respect for him. And I appreciated that he said, in his moment, he felt that he had a lack of training to deal with the situation of a violent student. That is absolutely fair. What I would also point out is that our armed forces were the same ones that mowed down Trevon Martin, or Sandra Bland was killed in custody. We talk like these issues are all in a vacuum, but they're not. My black students are frightened, my Hispanic students are frightened, that their parents will be deported, that they'll get shot in an accidental thing, or just that they are going to be vilified or thought of as worse than, because they are different. I would just like to finally say, please consider other options, the future of our children, and exactly what message we want to send as the city of Urbana. You have Urbana love back there. We have been a source of a lot of beautiful values coming out. I would be incredibly disappointed to see our city make this mistake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ben Jocelyn.
I don't feel safe around cops. Most of you look at me, see a 6'1" white dude, not the one likely to be targeted. Many of you would see something different if I felt safer in the society to more adequately and appropriately and freely express my gender identity more often. I wore a skirt to a screening of a video in Champaign a couple months ago, and I was flanked by two police officers. Granted, there was other context behind all of that. I'm not sure if that identified me by name or because I was wearing a skirt, but because I was a queer person in that theater, there were two police officers, one over each shoulder. I don't feel safe around police officers. There are other people who do not feel safe around police officers. It affects learning environments, and it might not affect, affect the learning environments for, for a lot of children, but it affects the environment for some children. That's not okay. We can say it's not our intention, we can say that our 18-page document between the two governments has these intentions, but we know that children have been shot by police officers, we know that children have been slammed into the ground by police officers. We know that these things have happened, and we know that that was not the express intent of the bodies that passed those measures. We know that this is going to cost us $300,000. I've been told by people in power and who've studied it, that we need $300,000 a year to run a mental health institution in this area. I am not okay with police in schools, and I am not okay with our money going to things that won't solve the root problem. There's, yeah, there's a lot of research that shows that it's not safer. And we can pretend that our police officers, who don't have the intention of doing wrong in their words and in their presentations, are going to do better. We know that they fill our jails with 52% to 73% black people, in a county with 13% black people. That's the numbers, here, not nationally, but here. And we're considering putting them in the schools. And to pretend that it's irrational for them to have fear if they see police officers goes against all logic and moral code. I know from last week's vote that we don't have the votes to stop it at that time. If you're convinced that there is some crisis, that this is the only way that you're ever going to get this through, put a sunset on it. Give it a year and a half, say, this is what we've done with $300,000, we think it's better than hiring a bunch of grandmothers. Imagine a world where we hire a bunch of grandmothers and community members and people who don't have jobs, at $15 an hour, which would be meaningful in their lives. And they'd be respected and safe. Don't bring guns into schools. Don't bring people who haven't spent their lives shepherding children into adulthood, or, bring people who've spent their lives shepherding children into adulthood. Bring people who are safe. Please.
Thank you. Mark Ensley. Oh, he chooses not to, you're going to speak anyway.
I was planning not to speak, yes. But I would just like to say that I oppose the, the intergovernmental agreement, and the reasons that people have said I find compelling. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. They choose not to address members, but they will go on record as continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And Eldress Melinda Carr, on behalf of the Ministerial Alliance, regarding the SOR agreement.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Marlin. I just gave you a updated version of it, so you can.
Okay.
I wanted to, I'm coming on behalf of the Minister Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity, and on October 7th, I read a statement from the Minister Alliance, so I'm going to provide the signed statement to the council to place on file with our concerns. And I know the agreement was posted, but we haven't had time to really look at it, so I wanted to provide this. And that's basically it, so, because I haven't had, you haven't had a chance to read the agreement, but we wanted to make sure the concerns were on file, and after we had a chance to really look at the agreement, we could see if our concerns have been.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry that, to make sure that our concerns were included in the agreement, and we haven't had a chance to read the agreement fully, and we want to have the time to do that, so I wanted to provide the statement for you to read, and then you'll see if we have any other concerns after we have a chance to read the agreement. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Okay. One more? Sure, come on up.
Hi. I put up a little, I put one of those things up there, but I'd rather do it now. It's Charlotte G.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So, do I have to start this? Someone else does, cool. So hi, my name is Charlotte G. I work as a tutor, working with this wonderful students of Champaign-Urbana. And my, let's just like be very clear, SRO is a way of, student resource officer is a way of sugarcoating what is effectively an armed police officer. So I think one of the people who came up provided the estimated price of a student resource officer, or more accurately, an armed cop, is $300,000. Doing some research online, the average salary of a school counselor is between $40,000 to $80,000 a year, averaging on the lower end. When one of the individuals came up and brought up the fact that sharing a single police officer between schools isn't ineffective measure, so is sharing counselors between schools. There aren't nearly enough counselors in these schools, especially with the dismal teacher-to-student ratios faced by the, pretty much the poverty-stricken school district. That, instead of hiring two cops with guns and putting them into a public institution, you could hire three to four counselors, or you could hire two counselors and fund more school lunches. It is a very ineffective and is a very irrational use of money to put guns in schools, if there are better methods. We have a system that, the Urbana School District has been plagued by systematic racism and systematic inequalities. That is why the deans were replaced, that's why they had more student interventionists, because Urbana schools were disproportionately expelling black and brown students. That's where this comes from. And those students are not going to feel safer, those students that are disproportionately being targeted by the student resource officer, or school resource officer, they're not going to feel safer being targeted by people with guns. They're already targeted by an administration that was aggressively expelling them. Effectively, this $300,000 is, it's a gamble on putting, it's a gamble on using potentially aggressive force, that maybe that will help a systematic issue, or a systemic issue, targeting students. Okay? I have talked to, and I engage with students frequently, I've talked to students about the violence in Urbana schools. Okay? I've talked to administrators and people that have also engaged with school boards and Urbana schools. It's, the solution isn't guns, the solution isn't cops, the solution is more funding, the solution is more people in schools, the solution is fixing the student-to-teacher ratio, the, the solution is affordable school lunches, so kids don't fight over school lunches. The solution isn't $300,000 for a badge and a pistol. Thank you all, yes. It's a pleasure to talk to you all. Bye, friends.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any. Next up is reports of the Committee of the Whole, Councilmember Dennis Roberts. Oh, excuse me, I had one other, I forgot to provide, summarize this input. City council members received emails from three people today, or at least I was copied on three, from LaShonda Cunningham, Rick Bernotus, and Teresa Sweeney, all in support of the School Resource Officer Intergovernmental Agreement. Bill?
I received an email from Ben Jocelyn that pretty much summarized what he said here.
Okay. Okay. Any other emails you want to mention for the record? Okay. Dennis?
All right, so the Committee of the Whole that met last week has forwarded to the city council quite a few different resolutions and ordinances, which we will go through now. First is ordinance number 2019-11-066, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. And it's a budget amendment number three, it's an omnibus amendment, and it was presented by Elizabeth Hanon and Don Ho, has relates to the cost of road salt, human relations, temporary employee, accepting a forestry grant, and from Morton Armoredom, and budget, police budget unspent funds reallocations, allocations. And for the committee, I move, to be approved.
Second. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes.
Next is resolution number 2019-11-049R. It's a resolution authorizing the issuance of capital improvement revenue bonds, Series 2019. And this is to assist the Cunningham Children's Home Project and other actions concerning these bonds, and this was introduced by Elizabeth Hanon. Has to do with a $7 million bond to help construct an education, recreation, and education center. And for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill. Is there any discussion? Charlie?
Just for the record, there was a slightly revised ordinance included in your packet with better language.
With better language.
filled-in language, so I assume that's the version where.
So we, what we're doing is we're recommending the edited, approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, the edit there was, the name of the bank is now the Morton Community Bank, rather than the Champaign-Urbana Lending Center.
That's right.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right. Next is ordinance number 2019-11-068, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter Two, to add a member to the Market at the Square Advisory Board, and this would be a food truck representative. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is resolution number 2019-11-051R. A resolution amending certain home investment partnership program loan documents between the city of Urbana and Bristol Place Residences, LP. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Dennis and seconded by Jared.
That was me.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Somebody remind me of what that, what that's about? Is there somebody here from the?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Lori. I just need to remember. I know it has something to do with the Champaign.
Yes, the first item here is how Champaign spends their allocation of funds, so it only real allocates their spending, it has nothing to do with the work on this side of Wright Street. But we are the administrators for those funds, so we need to approve this reallocation.
For them to finish building the.
For Bristol, it's to provide three units rather than two units. I can take out the specifics if you need it, but.
Okay, no, I just need it, I just need a, yeah, remember there.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're okay. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is resolution number 2019-11-052R. A resolution approving a certain intergovernmental agreement between the city of Urbana and Housing Authority of Champaign County. And for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second. Eric can second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Is there? Is there any discussion? Jared?
We had some changes that were made to the document, including the addition of some language to the review process at the end. I was wondering, Chief, if you wouldn't mind commenting on some of the changes that we've offered from last week.
We're on the Housing Authority.
I'm sorry, we're on the wrong topic. I forgot we had one more intergovernmental agreement before the next.
It's an IGA, it's just a different...
Intergovernmental agreement. He's ready.
We're back on the IGA between the City of Urbana and the Housing Authority. So that was moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any questions, discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay. Then we have resolution number 2019-11-050R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement. This has to do with the School Resource Program intergovernmental agreement and a School Resource Offer, Officer, and it's sponsored by the UPD. And for the committee, I move approval, I will move approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Dean. And before we get into the questions and discussions, I wanted to finish off public input. We have two more people who wish to speak at the time of the agreement. But we do have a motion on the table at this point. First up, Michael Bruin.
Hello? Okay. Thank you, my name is Michael Bruin, I live at 806 East Washington, and I have much to say except a couple things. I went to school here in both Urbana and Champaign, and I engaged in a certain number of altercations, which because I was white and had relatively good grades, didn't come to anybody's attention. I think that when we look at the kind of problem we're addressing, I think how we visualize the problem affects what kind of solution one wants, whether it's a police officer, or a counselor, or just having the teachers themselves or community members deal with the problem. It's one thing if the problem is emotional maturity, or anger management, it's another thing if it has to deal with everyday kind of conflict resolution, and it's a third thing if one is dealing with issues of gangs, or, you know, cartels or something like that, where one could imagine violence being a regular part of the business model. So I think what we have to be clear is find out what it is that the problem is we're addressing at Urbana High School. If it is mostly anger management and conflict resolution, then I think there would be no need for a police officer. If one is dealing with a national war against cartels or drug things, like what's happening in Mexico, you'll notice that even there, there's some real question as to how to deal with it, and I think one could debate it further. But I think before the debate goes very far, we have to be clear as to what, how we identify the problem. And I would otherwise just like to register that I do oppose a police officer, so I am speaking in opposition, but I thought that, having said that, that it would be useful also to talk about how the discussion might proceed usefully further from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last to speak is David Guth.
Good evening, my name is David Guth. I'm a 16-year Urbana resident, I live at 1401 South Smith Road in Urbana, and I have two sons in Urbana schools, one a sophomore at UHS, and another who is a fifth grader, soon to be UMS student next year. So Mayor Marlin and members of the City Council, what I'm about to share with you will not be news to some of you, as I've spoke about this on the record at the October 1st and November 11th Urbana Board of Education meetings, in support of the proposed SRO intergovernmental agreement. For families and community members who are in the audience or watching, I'm not sure we have ever given context for our reason for being so vocal on this issue. My spouse Julia and I are here because of a total of 17 instances of physical and verbal assaults on our older son experienced during his sixth grade year at UMS four years ago, 12 of which were instigated by the same student. Last week, a parent asked us, where were the teachers while this was occurring? Sadly, our response was that in one of the many violent incidents, the teacher was knocked to the ground along with our son in the middle of class. It was at this point in our journey, we began to advocate for the safety and security of all students and teachers. Today, our stance in support of the proposed agreement has not changed, but the growing number of cases of Urbana youth either possessing or using a gun clearly has. We have guns inside the schools. According to recent statistics from the state's Attorney's Office, the number of delinquency petitions involving boys under the age 18 accused of either possessing or using a gun was seven in 2017. This number has more than doubled to 16 in 2018. More recently, 25 such related cases were filed as of September 29th, 2019, only three-quarters of the way into the year. According to these statistics, the rate of incidents involving youth either possessing or using a gun has nearly quadrupled in two years. Based on the above statistics, as well as Chief Seraphin's statement at the November 5th BOE meeting, it's firmly established on public record that the number of local youth possessing or using guns has experienced a significant increase over the past two years. Additionally, let the record show that these gun crimes are occurring among the same youth that I mentioned earlier physically and verbally assaulted our son 12 times in sixth grade at UMS four years ago. One student, despite the establishment of a no-contact clause and years of intervention from clinical professionals. A brief cursory search of Urbana youth possessing guns generated numerous news articles, but in my email sent to the Board of Education, I shared three links to recent significant media releases. The first WCIA report described three Urbana youth arrested a few weeks ago in Hoopston in possession of a gun and stolen vehicle. Their arrest resulted in a police chase in which the three youths fled from the vehicle after driving over a street sign and hitting a house. Of the six recent incidents, in the September 29th News Gazette article titled "Six Recent Cases Involving Juveniles and Guns," four involved Urbana youth involved in serious crimes involving guns. Another News Gazette article, "Variety of Issues Fueling Rise in Gun Crimes Among Area Teens," shared various in-depth perspectives on the variety of issues that are fueling a rise in gun crimes among area youth. In this article, Reverend Willie Comer shares that he once recently asked a group of 20 local boys if they had access to guns. Every kid raised his hand. Chief Seraphin stated in the link to the third article above, "No matter how we count them, or what metric we use, gun crimes are up in 2019, for 2019." In the same article, State Lieutenant Attorney Julia Reit states, "Always the goal in juvenile prosecution is to accept responsibility, rehabilitate, and move forward to becoming productive citizens." But as she continues to explain, "In any case of any public servant, there are competing responsibilities. These are very serious cases, always the goal is to protect. I encourage all of you to strive to balance these responsibilities as public servants and vote in favor of the proposed SRO intergovernmental agreement with proposed amendments." Thank you.
Thank you. Last is Allison Martel. I apologize, your car got stuck with some others. Thank you.
Hello there. Hi there. My name's Allison Martel. I'm a community member here, I've been here for about 11 years. I came here because I wanted to express my opposition to increasing police presence in our schools. I do not believe that police officers will keep the students safer. I believe more counselors will, I believe more presence, a larger presence of adults will, a better student-teacher ratio will. I believe that the students that are going to be most negatively impacted by this change are going to be some of our most vulnerable students. I believe it's going to affect children of color more, I believe it's going to affect children who deal with disabilities and mental illnesses more, I believe that it's going to affect LGBT youth more. I believe that this move, instead of keeping children safer, it will criminalize them and endanger them. I believe that this is part of the school-to-prison pipeline, and I strongly oppose. And I just wanted to express that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay. I'm going to take the chair's privilege for a minute and also make a brief statement. I wanted to, first of all, thank the Urbana City Council and members of the public for all the feedback that you've provided on this issue, and as you see in the revised document that was in the packet that we'll discuss tonight, we've incorporated a number of the comments, questions, and changes suggested by the public and council members, and the new document reflects, I think, many of the concerns of the public. So I do thank you all for your input and perspective. I also wanted to take a few minutes to address three important issues that were raised over the past couple of weeks during comments and discussion. The first is, issue is related to a belief by some that the City of Urbana is using the SRO program as a way to quote "balance our budget," end quote. This is false. The budget outlined in the agreement covers the costs of assigning two officers plus vehicles and equipment to the school district. The officers will be pulled from existing patrol officers, and the department will then have to fill those two positions with new hires. The city will continue to cover extra police costs, such as police overtime at athletic events, as one example. We're also fronting the money to cover the cost of the two vehicles for the School Resource Officers with a seven-year payback period. If for any reason the SRO program ends early, the city will absorb the cost of those vehicles. And I do want to emphasize that the city has invested and will continue to invest in our public schools and children and families in many, many ways. One of the more recent examples is the program we initiated last year. It's a mentoring and enrichment program for young men at Urbana High School. It's led by our community relations specialist, Preston James, and he works with Jorge Alvear at the high school. I want to thank them both for the efforts they have made. The Self-Made Kings are off to a good start, and that's just one example of the investment that the city is making in our, our youth, and the time and resources devoted to the school system. We also fund programs and services for youth and families in many different ways, through social service grant, funding, and other grants. These range in, from things like the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, which serves youth after school, and to First Families, which is an innovative new program that helps stabilize families and, in the long run, will help the kids who need it the most in our schools. And this year, we're making, and from here on out, we're going to be making a more concerted effort toward preventing homelessness and improving housing security through a variety of measures, using our federal and state grant programs, our continued cooperation, partnership with Habitat for Humanity, rental assistance, our transitional housing efforts, construction of new affordable housing in the City of Urbana, and a closer collaboration with both Cunningham Township, Champaign Township, and the City of Champaign, and the Housing Authority. So our focus is going to be on housing and housing security, and that too will help get to the societal contexts surrounding and, that are causing so much trauma in our youth. But I wanted to emphasize again, the city is not balancing our budget through this agreement. This is a partnership with the school district. The second issue I wanted to address is, we heard frequently, a general characteristic, characterization of police as quote "being violent and punitive," those were terms that were used, and the continued fear, and I acknowledge the fear and how people are uncomfortable in the presence, could be uncomfortable in the presence of police. But I really think that that is unfair to the officers who are serving the City of Urbana, who are currently in the schools today, and who are on the streets. And while these comments were being made, one of the School Resource Officers, Michelle Robinson, was sitting in the back of the room, and, and if you had to describe an officer, those are not the words that you could use to describe her. We've heard from the principal of the middle school, the high school, faculty and staff, how important Ms. Robinson has been since February of last year, when she's been in the school. And I personally have never met an officer more committed, passionate, or caring about the kids that she serves in that middle school, and I've, and I've, she's described to me what she does day in and day out, and, and the, the range and variety and effort she puts into her job is astonishing. Same goes for Darren McCartney, they're both graduates of the Urbana School District as well. So Urbana officers are smart, they're well-disciplined, and they're well-trained. And I urge us all, and the public, and the students, to take the time to understand the SRO's role in the school, and more importantly, to make a concerted effort, and it'll be on both parts, to get to know one another. This School Resource Officer is about building relationships in the community and with students, and that's what the success of the program is going to be dependent on. But we need open minds on all sides to, to building those relationships, and I think we, as adults in the community, as parents, as teachers, as leaders, we need to demonstrate that commitment. It starts with us. And then the third issue I wanted to discuss, just briefly or touch on, is the, the centering of the conversation about School Resource Officers around quote "presence of armed officers in the school," or "armed cops in the school," or "more guns in the school." And that's been very prevalent in social media and in some of the discussion here in, over here and at the school board. Yes, like every other sworn police officer, the School Resource Officers carry a gun. And like every other trained police officer, it's highly unlikely that gun is ever going to come out of its holster. And I think the focus on guns carried by the Resource Officer in the school is diverting attention from the very, very real issue of guns in our community, gun violence in our community, and how gun violence is now touching and reaching and traumatizing our neighborhoods and our youth. And Mr. Guth touched on that earlier. I think we need to, our focus, every one of our focuses not, should not be on the guns in the holsters, but the guns in the hands of our children, and the guns on the street, and what it's doing to our kids and to our families. We need to be looking at the social context surrounding it, we also need to be terribly concerned about how tragically easy it is for kids to access guns. Just a few of the incidents, and I'll, I'll go over, I want to touch on those, just a few of the incidents over the past year. And in fact, a 10-year-old boy is fighting for his life as, as we sit here, after being shot twice last night through someone shooting into their house. This past summer, a 15-year-old Urbana youth accidentally shot himself in the groin. He apparently had tucked a loaded weapon into his waistband. That sort of thing might work in the movies, but it has tragic consequences in real life. In the past couple, year or so, a teenager accidentally shot and killed his 14-year-old friend. Another 15-year-old boy was shot in front of his house and killed. This past summer, a teen was shot in the arm in Urbana. Last school year, a student brought over 40 rounds of ammunition in a backpack into Urbana High School. And then this summer, and this is especially alarming, is 30 vehicles were reported burglarized in July and August of this year. All of these vehicle burglaries were from, were unlocked vehicles, and there, among the many valuables reported stolen, were three weapons. Now, we know that vehicle burglaries are most, are crimes of opportunity, and more often than not, they're done by kids and teens ruffling through cars. Kids know that people are keeping guns in unlocked vehicles, and they're, they know how to get them, and they're getting their hands on weapons with absolutely no idea how to handle them. And we're seeing incidents of children displaying BB guns and airsoft guns, which look just like the real thing, and they don't understand how this puts themselves, their friends in... And we're seeing incidents of children displaying BB guns and airsoft guns, which look just like the real thing, and they don't understand how this puts themselves, their friends in danger, and leads to contact with law enforcement. And nationwide, over twice as many gun-related suicides, there are over twice as many gun-related suicides than gun-related murders or homicides, and a significant number of these are teens. So I urge us all to keep the focus on the guns that are harming our kids, traumatizing our neighborhoods, not the guns worn by the SROs. But again, thank you for the input on this topic, and we look forward to the discussion tonight. I will point out once again that the intergovernmental agreement that is before the council right now is the same as what's in the packet, except there is a change in Section 8, and it reflects language that was added at the request of the school district, and it's related to confidentiality. But the substantial intent of the amendment is the same as what the council passed last week. So we have a motion on the floor. I do have a report by Chief Serapin.
I will keep this brief, as we spent a lot of time last week, and you heard my opening remarks then. I did, I just wanted to explain a couple of things. First, Mr. Brown's question regarding the search authority of the school resource officers. Just wanted to make sure I would clarify this, that indeed, school officials do have a greater search authority than a law enforcement officer on the street. When that law enforcement officer is then in the schools, and in this particular case, acting as a school official, they would then inherit that greater search authority. But this is where I wanted to make sure it was clear that that capacity is part of their partnership with the school officials. And all of those searches, 99% of those searches have occurred with school officials as part of that investigatory process. So as we kind of go through the discussion, if there are extra questions tonight on some of those things, I did bring former school resource officer Lieutenant Matt Bain, who's over here tonight, who might be able to help if you guys have a few extra questions that I might not know the answer to. With regards to my memorandum and the finalized document, first, I would like to thank you for your patience as we tried to scramble and get all this done with a holiday weekend, trying to get various administrators and attorneys and folks like that to sort of gather around and volley things back and forth. You will see there was just some language changes referring to my half-page memorandum. You will also see, I believe, Mr. Miller had talked about adding some specific trainings in Section 5A, and so that has been included in this document as well. We also provided an example of an emergency interview situation that was asked about last week. So we did put that in there, and that citation is listed there for you. The program evaluation and the SRO officer evaluation in Section 8 was, I think, the topic of one of the bigger topics of discussion. So using the amendment language that was passed through last week, we used that as our basis. We then refined Section A to exclusively be about that individual school resource officer, and then Section B was about the program itself, again, using the amendment that council had passed. As you all know, this is not a one-governmental organization operation. And so then we have then since worked with the school district and their staff. And as has been said already, if you look, I think, most of you should have gotten it into email, but it would have been at a fairly late hour. There should be a document in your hard packet that was on your chairs on page 15, and you will see the finalized language that was there. You will recognize the first, I guess, half as the amended language from last week. The second half is going to be the school district's addition to that with regards to confirming that no information that shouldn't get out, get out. And that's from their lawyers, their attorneys. And then finally, you will see the very last couple of sentences in there has to do with the final program evaluation report. So that's the, that last paragraph that we just went through is, I guess, the cause for what you have sort of here at the end of, or the late hour tonight. So having said that, I will answer questions or find the right person who's here who can answer questions.
Perhaps Superintendent Ivory Tatum could join the chief up here, just in case you had questions for her. Dennis.
Yeah, hi. Thanks. I went through the document with all the revisions, which I appreciate your having made. And I guess I have some maybe questions for myself that I'd like maybe a little more information about. One maybe is really about bullying. We've got a couple, I've had a couple of emails of people who've experienced children who've been bullied sometimes for several years, sometimes causing a lot of trauma and actually requiring psychological counseling after that. When there's bullying in the school, is that considered a civil conflict, and when does it become a criminal act? Who handles bullying when it's observed in the school hallways?
So I guess it would kind of depend on the severity. I think traditionally, it would fall under the realm of the school staff. I think when we get into what we might call fighting words and threats, I think that when it might start to escalate into the involvement of the school resource officer.
So we have a bullying policy, a school district policy, and I don't have it, I didn't, I don't have that with me, the number, but it's under our board policies, bullying, intimidation, and harassment. So we have very specific policies and procedures to investigate every incident of bullying that is reported to us. I know oftentimes, some bullying incidents go unreported, so we encourage students to make sure a trusted adult knows about those things, because our administrators have various step-by-step, specific things that they're supposed to do and intervene and interview. So those would start at the school level, even repeated incidents. And again, it is all about severity, and if there were threats and other things like that made, sometimes that is where it might turn into a criminal offense, if there were threats of bodily harm, or weapons, or things like that involved. But I'd say typical, no bullying is good, but most of what we see is kind of that intimidation, repeated teasing, harassing, none which are acceptable or tolerated, but we have very specific school administrator rules and policies that our people should follow before it would be turned over to an SRO.
Yeah. One of the people who sent us a very lengthy and very fact-packed email was LaShonda Cunningham, who was very concerned about that. Her children were harassed quite a bit. And I know that in my own neighborhood, there's a family whose junior-high-age children decided to leave the public school system because they were both bullied, their brothers, and they opted for home education for a year and a half, and the reason was bullying. And whatever they felt was, they just didn't feel comfortable in school anymore. So these are the concerns. And obviously, the SRO officer's not the one who's going to initiate that, and of course, this has to be brought before the administration.
Sure.
But sometimes people say that, well, there is nobody there, when it happens, watching to intervene, and therefore, people feel threatened, children do. All right. Okay, so thanks for that. And then we've got a couple of things. Talking about after-school sports events where the SRO officer may attend, are they going to be expected to attend a lot of the extracurricular activities? This is considered overtime pay also?
So it would sort of, I guess, again, would depend perhaps on the activity. So when there are...
Football game, whatever?
Football games, basketball games, especially with crosstown rivals and games where we might expect a little more activity. Yes, they would be there, and as a matter of fact, and we would, usually in those situations for like a big football game, the SRO would be provided, the city would pay the overtime for that officer, and then if there are other officers needed, then the school district would be billed for those outside of, as a separate matter from the SRO.
And employing them in that sense for extracurricular activity, I mean, I can understand why, you know, security is important, but are they becoming sort of de facto security guards?
I wouldn't call them that. I would say, especially for the crosstown situations, we would want them there, because, again, as Mayor Marlin said, and as we've said many, many times, the purpose of this program is that our SROs have relationships with the students, and they know the students, and they know they have connections with them. So it's important for them to, you know, they would be in those spaces and know the students who might need more support, or might need an extra eye, or the students that you've alluded to who may be being bullied, or, you know, and they can be there and have that watchful eye out for them, because they would know those students.
And just maybe...
Opposed to someone who's just, who's there covering and kind of watching for incidents that might happen.
And they would know things that might have happened that day, that Friday before the football game, and know the dynamics, and know what's going on, and can sort of intervene. So a lot of those same things that we've talked about that are useful during the school, they do bleed over into some of those evening, I guess, activities.
And so if there was an event or a situation that was starting to happen in, say, the bleachers, because students would recognize this SRO officer from their daily activities with, interactions with them, that's a person that they could go and say, okay, look, there's something happening over here, please come over and look at it?
I would hope that they would be able to de-escalate even faster, those kinds of situations, and maybe prevent, because maybe a student might give wind of something or know of something brewing, and, you know, instead of just, you know, they don't, they may not approach a police officer that they're unfamiliar with, but they might go up to the SRO and say, hey, this is what I just heard, or this is what I saw.
And I know that that's been a philosophy of the police department, to put people on the ground in the neighborhoods, because they feel that, once you build a rapport with a police officer, you're more likely to then trust them to help you.
Absolutely.
Dennis, can I say just one thing, too, regarding the after-school activities and football games? Having been a student at Urbana Middle and High School and Elementary School, I can't, I recall every football game and basketball game, even that I went to in middle school, when they had the basketball games at Urbana Junior High. There was always a police presence there. That's nothing new.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, so then another section, Section 6, it's titled, "Reporting of Serious Crimes", and talks about the record of release forms which get filled out and then released. And I was wondering, are the, who approves the release that these, the data that's on the release get released? And this has to do with the Illinois Student Records Act. Is this the administrators who are going to be releasing this, or will this be the...
So we have a, all school, and again, this is part of our school code, that we have a release of information that we ask parents or guardians to complete, and that is their, they're releasing information that they want shared. It might be attendance records, it might be health or medical, discipline information. So the parents and guardians are the ones who actually complete it, and they turn it into the office for us to be able to share that information between. And it isn't just, this isn't just something we use with police, we use this with mental health agencies, social service agencies. The release is pretty standard. We use it for anyone that we're sharing student information with.
Then two more things, perhaps. A lot of the, Section 7, which has to do with standard operating procedures, written procedures, subsection, interaction between SROs and the school district administration, Point A on Page 6 and 7. "The law enforcement and safety interventions, safety of school and its occupants," talks a lot about, you know, that the officer's there to try to protect the students, oversees student interactions, is not necessarily a disciplinarian unless it becomes what is deemed to be a criminal act. Does this also include observation and surveillance or protection of school property itself? Or are we talking mostly about interactions between people? I guess if you see, like, some event of potential vandalism in the bathroom, is this an administrative issue to be dealt with, or does the SRO step in? I mean, I'm kind of wondering about, as we talk about possible events that happen in a school.
Sure. Again, I will go back to, I guess, it sort of sounds repetitive at times, but this sort of continuum, depending on the severity of it, if we have some kid who's breaking out a window, then there's glass shattering, then the SRO might be more apt to intervene. I don't know, Lieutenant Bain, if there's any story on point that you can think of with regards to that. But again, I would say it's probably more one of severity, depending on the amount of damage or how it's being, I guess, again, it's going to be, the safety's going to be the number-one issue there.
All right. I had a question, but I think...
Did Lieutenant Bain want to add anything?
If you have, if you have something that might be, if you don't, that's fine, too.
You can take this seat over here. No, it's okay, Carol. Here's another seat. This is Lieutenant Matt Bain, who has served as a school resource officer for how many years?
Yeah, good evening. I was the school resource officer from the spring of 2013 till January of 2017. And a lot of, a lot of the questions, Chief is right, it just depended upon the severity of the situation. Something like a criminal damage was just asked about. If a kid is writing with a marker in a bathroom stall, obviously, I wouldn't go running in there and grabbing this kid and doing something like that. If they're out front, destroying school property, breaking a door, breaking a window, breaking a fence that's been done out by the football field, that might be something that I intervene with, because that would be a more severe potential situation.
Because of the value of the property involved?
Well, not only the value, but the dangerous artifacts, the glass, the pipes from a fence, something that could be used as a weapon. It's just, it's not, it was not a very regular situation. Drawing on the bathroom stall might have been a regular and a more common situation. Tearing apart a fence and running around with part of that...
Needs intervention.
Needs intervention.
So I would say the most applicable part of this paragraph is the protection and the safety of others. I mean, that is where we would expect an SRO to intervene, if there's possible harm.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
I would add that the destruction of property anywhere is against the law.
Sure.
So just destroying somebody's property, just because it's school property doesn't make it special. If it was your property, would you want, wouldn't you want somebody to intervene? Think about it.
Good answer.
Okay. Did anyone else have questions?
Oh, I have one more.
One more, okay.
Please. I mean, I'm trying to be thorough at my turn, and then everybody else have all their turns. In Section 7A, under Arrests, this is on Page 10, it talks about student searches, and it says Item Number 3 under that, Subsection B, Item Number 3, on Page 10. "When feasible, the search should be conducted by a certified employee or SRO of the same sex as the student." So I was wondering if it means that the two SROs that are going to be employed at the school, does one need to be male and one need to be female? Or are we going to depend upon staff or school administrators to fulfill those two different requirements? requirements?
I would, I don't, I want us to pick the best fit for each school when it comes to the SROs. And so that might vary or flip-flop depending on who's interested in the pool of available patrol officers. When it comes to these types of things, we have a similar policy for the street. When feasible, at two in the morning, and there's some arrest being made, we will attempt to do that if, if we can. There are certain procedures and witnessing and other things we can do if that's simply not an option. Here, we'll have a lot more options, because you'll have school staff and others there that should be able to help in that situation.
And they could step in, then, and help?
So two and three basically go together, there's an and there.
Yeah.
So in the presence of a school administrator or adult witness and an employee or SRO. So right now, the way we handle this is Darren is a male, but we have a female, you met her last week, Julie Blixson. So if we were to have to search a female student, Darren would be there as well as Ms. Blixson, and Ms. Blixson would be the one who might, if, you know, if, you know, a student, and we typically ask the students to do most of that, like pull out their pockets or shake out their hoodie, or shake out their backpacks. So our staff members are not patting students down and things like that. We would have the SRO doing that if they, you know, saw something that looked like a weapon. But typically, we would have a female with the male, vice versa, at the middle school, since Ms. Robinson is a female. If she ever had the opportunity where she needed to search a male student, we have several male, the principal or assistant principal, who would also be present to be there.
And fulfill that requirement.
Yep.
And I, okay, that's my questions, and I just want to say that I think it's very valuable. Thank you very much, Brent, for filling in Part B of Section Eight, which sets out the format of the evaluation for the program. That was the missing part that Jared talked about for some length, and I think it was a wise thing to ask about. And I felt that there was, in the draft, it was an unsolved area about how we're going to review this, how we're going to look at it, how we're going to like return to it after two years and every year thereafter, and all the details you've spit out in that that kind of explains and fills in the gaps that we hadn't had before, which I think are real important for the, for understanding and evaluating this process. Thank you.
Okay. I think, I'm going to go back to Jared, because I know he asked his question two ordinances ago, a resolution ago. Did you still have questions?
Dennis actually covered most of that initial question. I did have some other questions, but most of my comments are really for counsel. But I'll let Mary Alice in.
Okay.
If I still have some after, other folks have got, I'll let you know.
All right, Mary Alice.
All right, I have some, I'll start with the yes/no questions. All right, so, yes or no, have we ever had a policy, intergovernmental agreement with the school board with the SROs being in place since the 90s?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Is there anything in here, and I apologize if it's in there, I didn't see it, is there anything in here that says this agreement is automatically renewed after two and a half years?
No, I think we're, yes, we're, no. So that is a yes/no, no.
Okay, so that's a no. So I got two no's, right? Okay.
Two no's.
I got two no's. So just to clarify that, this agreement only covers two and a half years, and then we have to have a whole other conversation, potentially another agreement, or potentially a renewal of the agreement, but there is nothing in this particular agreement that says it will automatically renew for two and a half years, or two years, or one year, whatever the timeframe is.
No.
Okay.
I would like to add to that, but I'm not going to. Just, yes.
Oh, well, now I have longer questions, so if you want to add to that.
Well, no, I just was going to say, again, I would hope that the data and the review process that we go through would be enough where we wouldn't have to, you know, go through such a lengthy renewal. So that's it, that's all I'll say.
Okay, all right. Chief, I'm wondering if, and I'm sure you have had the opportunity to speak with the chief of police in Champaign, who has five SROs, is that number correct?
Correct. One at each high school, Centennial and Central, and then one at all three of the middle schools for five total.
Okay, so I'm wondering if you had an opportunity to speak with him about concerns that have arisen, things that perhaps they want to update or change in terms of their mode of operation, and see how that has potentially been incorporated in this agreement.
So I have talked with him. We have not embedded anything specifically in the agreement based on those conversations. I will tell you certain things that I've learned from talking to other chiefs, and this came apart, or came about with regards even to simple things like uniforms, that most chiefs would want a full, regular uniform, and that's one of the things that clearly identified, no confusion, not a question about who they are, where we've sort of taken a slightly different approach for Urbana. But traditionally, a lot of those same things, I think they're a fairly similar sort of day in the life of SRO sort of approach, like how they do it, how they're integrated in the schools, and a lot of those things are, I think, beyond even just Champaign, but most of the SRO programs nationally.
Okay. I actually have two more yes/no questions, I apologize. So has there ever been any kind of formal, informal complaint against the SROs that have been in our schools since the 90s? And that you're aware of, that's come in front of a board, that has come to the chief, has been written?
Not that I'm aware of. And I don't, not that he's aware of.
Have there been any positive or negative comments about the SROs, the two that we've had in since August?
Well, I know we've had several positives.
Aside from the testimony that we've had?
Sure, I don't, I can't speak to any negatives.
I have not been made aware of anything since August, negative about either SRO.
Okay, all right. I'll hold my comments for when we move on to the other state.
Any questions? Further questions? Bill?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying the amendment we added. I know we added a couple sentences, and lawyers added a few more sentences, and then the school district lawyers added a few more, so it got kind of big, but I think it did help clarify it. I did have a couple questions, and also adding the specifying more about the training. I think the training's going to be pretty important. So now it specifies that not only do they need the basic resource officer training certificate, but also juvenile officer certificate. Do we have officers that specialize in juvenile cases now, or do we have juvenile officers?
So juvenile officer is essentially a 40-hour certification. And over the course of the years, it used to be something, when I started, you would, at some point, when you made detective, you might go, and they'd send you away for 40 hours. They sent me away to the Park Inn on North Cunningham many moons ago, where I got to, they brought a class, a mobile class through. Now, there are other different options to achieve that 40 hours. Sometimes they can take it during the Police Training Institute. So I believe, right now, we're trying to send as many recruits when they are initially trained to get that 40-hour certification immediately. That's not always necessarily the case, and we still might, we might have to backfill. I think we have, like, all of the sergeants are, and we've done a better job over the years of trying to get everyone in the department as a certified juvenile officer. That's slightly different than maybe specializing in the cases, where we might have cases where detectives would work, like we have a juvenile investigator whose sole purpose is investigating juvenile crimes, but those usually have to do with abuse and neglect and other more sensitive areas.
And those kind of trainings, do they cover the differences in psychology as far as maturing mind and what young people see as being illegal versus just wrong or versus not a problem?
Yeah, they did when I took it, and I believe they will even expand on that even more in the resource, the basic resource officer school as well.
And then, are all of our officers crisis intervention trained now?
No.
Are we getting close to most of them, or?
I don't know, it's a slightly different topic. I know there's a bit of a, within that, there's a bit of a narrative within the CIT world, whether you should have everybody CIT trained. Everyone in the state of Illinois has to have eight hours of mental health first aid. And we have always asked those who wanted to go to CIT, because it's, there has to be a bit of love for that work, and we want to make sure that the people that go want to go to that. So I don't know exactly, I would guess we're probably around half, and if Lieutenant Sanders was here, I'd ask him, but I would guesstimate, as I sit here, probably half of the officers at Urbana are CIT.
It seems like our SROs would be the type that would want to do that. Have they pretty much taken the CIT training?
I don't know if Michelle Robinson is a CIT currently or not, I couldn't answer that.
Okay. And then, in the fight that was in February, was it, the fight in high school? I know there were several court cases that came out of that, and I think one at least went to juvenile prison for a while, I don't know if he's still there. Besides that, have there been any other, how long have both resource officers been there?
So Officer Robinson has been at the middle school since September 5th. Officer McCartney has been at the high school in a three-days-per-week fashion since, I want to say, February. And then with overtime to try to cover those Mondays and Fridays, so that's how long each one has been there.
Since he's started, have there been any other juvenile cases go to court from the schools?
I don't, I don't-
Related to school incidents? No. I mean, there've been, I mean, we've heard tonight several things that have happened in the community involving Urbana youth, but not things that have come directly from the school.
With Michelle, actually, I did ride along with Officer Robinson about five years ago, so I know her a little bit, and we spent a couple hours dealing with some stolen candy at County Market. That's how long ago it was, it was County Market was still open. But I thought she handled that really well, and we waited for the parents and everything, so I can see how you would consider her a good candidate for SRO. But with her going part-time, or previously part-time at the school and part-time officer, it gave her a chance to get out in the community more, and is there going to be something missing if both resource officers are spending more time in the schools and not as much on a beat in the community doing other investigation?
I don't think so. I think one of the things that, Michelle has been here for 10 years, Officer Robinson, so she had brought all of that experience in, and I know Principal Weemelton would even, he even spoke of, that she came in and they had some issue, and they were scratching their heads, and she goes, oh, that's because this and this, they didn't mesh, and she immediately started to fill those gaps in. I don't know that it's going to necessarily, I don't believe it will, not being on the street. I think it gave her a head start to get in there. And so whoever we would select for the SRO for the high school, the full-time one for the high school, I'm hoping that they would have that sort of same resume, if you will, to bring that knowledge in.
And do you have any plans currently to set a certain period of rotation, like when somebody starts as an SRO, say, you know, we'd like you to stay at least three years, and then if you want to rotate out, we'll find somebody else and start training them?
We have not. I know that the SROs have varied in some of their lengths of service. Tim McNutt, I think, has the record at seven or eight years. Three to four seems to be something a little more attainable, so, but no, we have not set any timeframe.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Sharice?
Yeah, I just got the opportunity to actually go over this letter from the Ministerial Alliance, and so they have four questions. And these questions are, seem to be answered in the new document, but I'm going to answer, I'm going to ask them just so that you guys will know what those questions are. Does the SRO have full access to any student at any time?
Depending on the severity of what is going on, yes. So if it is a safety issue, or weapon-related, I know we've talked about some of those, because they are, they would always be acting with an administrator, and our administrators always have access to any student at any time.
Okay, so that's a possible yes.
Yes.
Okay. When a student talks to an SRO voluntarily, do they need to have permission from the parent?
If it's voluntarily, no. I mean, it depends, I guess it would depend on what they're sharing. If they're sharing information around a possible event, or, you know, giving some insight to the SRO in a prevention manner, then no, they would not. But if there had been some wrongdoing and the SRO was questioning that student, then most definitely we would want the parent and the administrator.
I have a question for my own edification. Are teachers still considered mandated reporters for child abuse and negligence?
All staff, not just teachers.
Okay. I just wanted to understand it, okay. Will the SRO be privy, if, for example, if a teacher feels that a child is being neglected or, and/or abused at home, do they go to the SRO? Do they go to the social worker? Do they go to a counselor? Do they call Child and Family Services? What are they required to do? Do they have to do it, or do they just, can they report it to an SRO?
A student?
No, a teacher.
Oh, well, sure, they could report it to an SRO, but they don't have to. They're mandated reporters, so they don't have to tell anyone, they can just report it.
They can just call Child and Family Services directly?
Yep.
Okay. That was just for my own knowledge. What will the participation look like? Will a student be asked to participate in informal counseling or consultation, police interviews, voluntary contact, and other general contact with the police without the parent, legal guardian, or attorney, other legal representative being present?
Well, I can, I can try. So there are, there was a lot to that, I think, if I just got-
Can you read it? Yeah, read it one more time.
What will the participation look like? Apparently, this is, they're going from an earlier draft regarding Page Two, where it says, "Our concerns," and they say in the letter, "Our concerns about the reference to the role of an informal counselor on Page Two of the document, Paragraph Six, being presented at the meeting that was last week." So they're talking about Page Two, Paragraph Six. I've looked for it, I'm not finding it.
So, yeah, that was an earlier draft, where one of our goals was-
Yeah, so they're asking, what will the participation look like? And I know that it's basically been answered in the new revision, in the revised on Page Three, where it says, "SROs are not counselors." And, but I just wanted to address these questions so that they get addressed.
So this came up at one of the board meetings, there's no mandatory participation in any sort of program specifically with regards to counseling and police interviews as well, so that we don't, you know, we can ask a student, but there's no mandatory-
They don't have to sit in an interview with you without, because basically it says, "Without the parent, legal guardian, or attorney, other legal representative being present." So, there, the gist that I get from the question is, will a student be asked, that's operative right there, to participate in informal counseling or consultation, blah, 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 without the parent, legal guardian, or attorney, or other representative being present?
And I think it would sort of depend on what the issue kind of is, so if they thought they, hey, did you see the fight down in the hallway, fifth hour? What happened there? As opposed to, you were involved in the fight, I need you to come down and talk to me. So during that interview, the formalized interview, that's when we would go back to the document and hear where the law is really clear on, if they're being detained and questioned, and they have to have the parent noticed, and then we coordinate that with the schools. And I don't, I don't know, Matt, if there's an example that might be helpful to illustrate how-
Well, I think that the fight example is a good one. At the, at the high school, anyway, a lot of cameras are constantly rolling, and you might not be able to see actually what happened during a fight, but you can see the 18 kids around there holding their cell phones up and recording it. So then we can go back collectively and look for these witnesses and gather that evidence in a situation like that.
So if we look at Page Eight, I think this answers the question. Number three, interviews of minor students without permission of the student, of the student's parent, guardian are not permitted unless a legal process is presented or in emergency situations. And the last time we were here, we talked about what those emergency situations might be, in situations involving allegations of parental or guardian abuse or neglect, and I think we also talked about if, that again, is that severe safety of others lens.
Okay. And the last question they have in the letter is, if a parent does not want their child or children to talk- "If a parent does not want their child or children to talk informally with an SRO, will they be able to opt out of the program?"
I'm not exactly sure how to answer that. I would hope that informal talking, "Hey, how you doing? Did you see the Bears game the other day? Mitch Trubisky's no good." I would hope that we could have those informal conversations. And that's part of what I envision this being at the school, is this ability to sort of create some of those relationships. So I'm not, I guess I would take it on a case-by-case basis if there was for some reason.
So you're hoping that it doesn't start off being adversarial?
Sure.
In that says that, you know, if, if, if an adult SRO actually speaks to a student, "Hey, how you doing? Have a good weekend, dah, 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 dah," that they don't look at him like he's crazy, or her, like, you know. You're hoping that they, some kind of relationship can, can evolve from having informal? So if, if a parent doesn't want their child to say anything to the SRO, then no harm, no foul?
Sure. And I think the spirit of what the Ministry Alliance is wanting to protect, right, is that we're not interviewing students who may have done something wrong, right, with not just formal conversations, or, "Hey, how you doing?" Or, you know, "We're getting to know one another." Or, "I like those Michael Jordan gym shoes you got on. Where'd you get them from?" This would be more, we're suspecting that a student has done something, and we are needing to talk to that kid, right, and want some information. So I think in, again, on page eight, we talk about, you know, the building principal can ask the, if the parent doesn't want the student, we can put things in writing. If poss, and in any instance, we would do whatever we could to make sure that the parent or guardian was present. So if possible, parent guardians will be given the opportunity to be present during any interview, and if they choose, be represented by legal counsel.
And that's just if the SRO officer has to be involved?
Yes.
But most of the time, SROs officers will not be involved in issues regarding when a child has to go to the principal's office?
Sure. The principal would, we would, again, we've talked about, you know, administrator discretion, right? So when an administrator sees the need to elevate it to, you know, this is beyond just an information-seeking conversation, now I'm going to go and get the SRO because there's more going on here. So I don't know if.
And I'll say that the school did a very good job when, when they would involve me in speaking to a kid, whether it was even that witness in the fight, they did a very good job contacting the parent. And if, most of the time, if they just explained why, you know, your kid was in trouble, they saw what happened. The parents were okay with it most of the time. As opposed to hearing about it after school, like, I had to go talk to the police. And then that became an issue. But I'd say the deans that I worked with at the, at the high school did a very good job of that communication. And I made several phone calls myself just to avoid any confusion.
Okay.
And then, yes, if the, if the parent said, "I don't want them talking to you," then I didn't.
Okay. So there's not really an opt-out. It's just, we have no conversation?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Dennis?
Justice review. I remember that, that, Jennifer, you were telling us that there were about 23 counselors, CITs, psychological counselors, already employed in the school district, and I'm wondering if that.
I think it might be more than 23, but yes, there are many.
So you, so, and are they're distributed mainly in the high school and junior high school, or are these in all the schools, including the elementary?
So would it be helpful if I just read from what we currently have?
Maybe. I mean, because, because the community is concerned whether there is help being available, and whether they're being robbed of two more positions, and I think we ought to, like, bring, you know, bring this out in the open.
Okay, so school social workers. We have two at early childhood. We have six shared across each, at each elementary, so each elementary has one. We also have two in, social work interns that work at the elementary level, so that's a total of eight for this year. We have three at Urbana Middle School. Dr. Weemel shared that each, each grade level, six, seven, and eight, have a social worker assigned to their team. We have two at Urbana High School as well. So that's five for the secondary level. The clinical professionals, we have three at UMS, again, one at each grade level. One and a half at UHS. We staffed that for two, but we were unable, you know, this position is not an easy one to fill. So right now, that halftime person is being filled with a retiree who can only work 100 days a year, so that technically is a halftime. But when that person leaves at the end of the school year, if she decides to leave, we would be filling that with two at Urbana High School. Restorative practices facilitators, Dr. Weemel talked about these as well. At Urbana Middle School, where there are three, one at each grade level. This role basically is the dean role, the former dean role, with a more restorative practices lens. And it mirrors the student interventionist role at the high school. And we have one of those, we have four, I'm sorry. And they don't do them, you know, it isn't like a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. They are assigned to an interventionist by their alpha, by their last name. So if, you know, if you're A through, I can't remember the alpha range, but A through G might be with this person, and then on and on and on. So they're, they're kind of split up that way. So then the interventionists get to know the students, and it doesn't matter what grade they're in, if they're a ninth grader or a 12th grader. So there are four of those, and again, that is the former dean position. School counselors, we have three at UMS, again, one for each grade level, four at the high school. Student engagement advocates, we have three shared across the elementary level, six at Urbana Middle School, four at Urbana High School. Student relations supervisors, this is the role Ms. Hershey talked about related. They were a traditional hall monitor, but now they have a more supervisory role. At the schools, we have one at the elementary level, and that is at Dr. Williams, where we have a larger student population there compared to the other elementary buildings. Eight at Urbana Middle School, 11 at Urbana High School. And then we've added several administrative positions in the last year. So we added an assistant principal at Urbana Middle School. To that administrator, administrative team has one principal, one vice principal, two associate principals. So they have a, an assistant principal for each grade level. We have one additional AP that was added to Urbana High School last year to add that team. Used to just have four administrators. Now it has five, one principal, two associate principals, and two assistant principals. We added two assistant principals at the elementary level. Dr. Williams has one, and we also, that one has been in existence since 2016, again, to help with the larger student body there. We recently added one to Yankee Ridge, and one shared between King and Early Childhood to support that new pre-K program. And we also added a licensed teacher position at the high school for the Restore U Room.
That's quite a list.
Yes. I didn't add them up to see if it was 23, but I think it might be more than that, but.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary Alice?
Sorry about that. My final question has to do with the new language that was added here with section eight. And all of a sudden, this doesn't work here. Just going to pull it up. So it says the very last sentence for section eight B says, "The final formal program evaluation report shall be provided to the Board of Education, the city, the Urbana City Council, and made available to the general public within 60 days of its completion." So usually what happens for city council is that everything is posted online. All, we have a packet up online that everybody can access. How does the Board of Education distribute these types of reports to the public?
So we would, we would share them in a public meeting. We usually post all of our documents prior to the, when we notice the meeting ahead of time. So we've not followed the 60-day, I kind of like that, but we've not done that. The 60-day timeframe, we usually notice that when we notice, you know, this is what we're going to talk about, and we would put all artifacts or all related items for public view at that time.
So if you were going to discuss it at a meeting, then those would be part of those meeting materials that would be posted online?
So they'd be posted in advance when we noticed the meeting, and as well on the table for people when they enter the meeting to pick up paper copies. And then after the meeting, they would again be put, if any changes were made, those would be added online.
Are there, is it, anytime do you put these types of things, like at the library, where people who don't generally have access to an online, any kind of computer?
We've not done that, but that's a good idea. We could do that.
I think the more we can distribute the information to the broader community.
Sure.
There was one person, and I don't know if we acknowledged his email, who talked a bit about the fact that the city of Urbana and the USD 116 boundaries do not 100% overlap. And the email that he sent to us basically asked for those people outside of the city of Urbana to be included in conversations. So I, I just kind of wanted to bring that up because I thought it was a really good point. And any way that we can distribute this kind of information prior to having conversations, I think can alleviate some of, hopefully, some of the concerns and some of the questions that people may have, so.
Sure.
Any other questions? Dean? Well, I think we need discussion among council members first. This was the question phase. But I do want to ask for discussion, and then we do have a motion already. Are there, is there discussion? Jared?
Thanks, Mary Alice. She knew, she knew it. She knew it was coming. I didn't, I didn't have any other questions for the folks, the chief or the superintendent, because I think you guys actually hit a lot of them. Some of them were just substantive about the document itself, but my comments are really for you guys. And they're, they're for all of us. As leaders, they're not just exclusive for the council. Obviously, we're a public body, so therefore, they're for everyone. I do want to give credit where credit is due, and chief and legal, thank you for the additions that you brought to this. And the extra language that was added to our amendment was a, was a good addition, and I think it's headed, headed in the right direction, though I still think it's, falls a little short ultimately. Bill, thanks a lot for even having the wherewithal to add the amendment. You brought a lot more to that last council meeting than I even had the foresight of. One of these days, I'm going to learn that we can do that and think of doing it ahead of time. I think this was a good, a good learning experience for me, but thanks for, thanks for bringing that there because it would have been even harder for me to have a discussion about it without us even including a review process. But I do want to point out to the council and to you all as well that I have, I've got, I still have an overarching issue with this, and that's the way, not only which it was, it has been rolled out, but with the substance that is provided as support for us making this decision. You know, we, we get a lot of paperwork as coun, as council persons, you know. You guys don't see our packets all the time, but they're, they're full of stuff. There's a lot of reading. I put in many hours every week going, going through, as we all do, to make sure we're very informed and we, we know a lot about every decision that comes across our desks. With this particular decision, in light of how it stands in our community, the sensitivity around it, I'm still struggling to find substantive documentation and evidence to support why we're doing it. Couple of folks in the audience have raised good questions about why. You know, what is, what is the problem? Do we define the problem that we are trying to solve? I think we maybe have in our heads, but we haven't written it down. We haven't made it clear. We haven't turned that into, you know, into something more than just us talking about it, in, in my mind. And largely, the evidence in support of this has just been reporting, given through testimony by the chief and the superintendent. We haven't, you know, seen the kind of substance that we see in even minutia that comes across our desks for zoning ordinances. We considered one earlier that had a packet of paper almost twice the size of what has been given us to the IGA, and the IGA packet is pretty much mostly the IGA. I think the original one had a one and a half-page summary from, from you, chief. But it didn't include anything that showed research, or, you know, here's all the things we looked at, what we weighed this, here are the pros and cons of this decision. We didn't show, hey, you know, here, what are, and this is something we've done on the council. We've shown, hey, these are things, the trade-offs. These are the things that we're not going to invest in by choosing to invest in these things. None of that consideration was given to us. It was really just brought to us as, here's our, here's our great idea. Why don't you guys vote on it, and let's, let's get this, get this show on the road? And in that, that, that light, that's the, that's the issue that I, that I largely have, is that we're not being given a lot of specifics, a lot of timelines, a lot of things that I've seen, given to us in matters that I would consider not as important as this. We're still missing a lot of, a lot of those things. So, you know, I'm, I'm talking to you guys as, as my fellow council members that, you know, we are considering this, we're voting on this, but we've not seen the substance that I think is important to let our community know that we're really concerned, and we're really invested in making a smart decision about this, and that we really do have strong, good justification for voting yes and saying, "This is a good program. This is what it's going to do." I'm super glad that we've added the review process because it's going to allow us some time to come back at it. But this is the problem, is that what we're doing is we're saying that it's okay for us to consider the merits of this program after we've decided to implement it rather than before. And I know maybe some of that has been brought up through our discussions amongst ourselves here, but, you know, we haven't allowed a lot of stakeholders to have input from what I can see from the community. I mean, there have been, what, four public meetings regarding this, and four chances for public input from there? And otherwise, people got to send emails to hope that they can get their point across? This is a big issue. This is, it's in-depth, it's detailed, and a simple IGA just isn't, isn't enough for me to be able to say, okay, well, we've, we've clearly articulated our position. We're showing how, how much work we've put into this. It's just, it's just the IGA. And the IGA doesn't have a couple of things that I consider critical to the success of a program. We didn't outline our miserable deliverables. We have only a couple simple goals, and I think six loosely-defined criteria we can use to achieve those goals. But we didn't define the problem. There are two sections in here, the untoward incident intervention, that did not get any attention. It just, it just says that some sort of SRO will be, or SOP will be created for that. The following section, the investigating suspected criminal activity, also received absolutely no definitions, just that it would be created. It's not in the agreement at this time. Anyway, I'm not going to go through all those details, but you guys get what I'm saying. I, I hope you understand what I'm saying. I don't think that anybody's got wrong intentions here. That's not what I'm trying to say. But I do think that we have not taken the time and effort to put the kind of consideration to something like this that we should have. And that's, that's my piece.
Any other comments? Sharice?
Dr. Tatum, why do we need SROs?
I thought we were doing discussion. That's a question. So, well.
And what are the statistics, if you have any, that show that SROs might possibly be a positive? be a positive force within the high school and middle schools environment?
Okay. So, I did not bring my whole SRO folder with me, but why we need SROs, we need that positive presence. We need that relationship for our students to, we've talked about fear of police, and we need to combat that by having positive role models for that police presence that our students can connect to and build relationships from. We need that prevention aspect, you know, there that they can intervene quickly. Our administrators are not trained in some of the ways that officers are. We've talked about a lot of trainings that they get that our staff are not privy to and don't have. So it's just another way for us to keep our staff and our students and everyone on our campuses safer.
Okay, and the other thing, because I've heard a lot of people that, you know, kind of repeat what Jared said, that have come up and talked about alternatives to an SRO. And as an educator, the one thing that I remember is coming from my administrators was how I couldn't talk to my kids, how I couldn't, you know, we weren't even allowed to hug our kids when they would want to hug us. You know, there were just certain things is, they were saying about, talking about alternatives, counselors, older people walking the halls, which my mother used to do, I think along with Reverend Underwood, used to walk the halls, and all these things. But I know that with that comes some liability, in the sense that should something pop off, they have to scatter, because they're not allowed to interact physically with students. Am I understood correctly?
So, I'm trying to understand your question.
I'm asking you.
So like, so like, somebody who is not a staff member needs...
Right, volunteering, walking the halls, so on and so forth, being there for the wisdom that will be totally ignored while they're walking the halls. Am I correct in saying that they are not...
We would not want volunteers intervening or, you know, anything like that. We wouldn't want our staff members, you know, to be intervening in the event there were a situation like a fight or something like that. Is that what you're...
Yeah, or if, or any kind of situation where maybe a student would come up to them to talk to them about something personal.
Sure.
What would be the volunteer or hall monitor? We don't do hall monitors anymore, do we?
We do. The student relations supervisors are technically what you would remember as a hall monitor, yes. So, like, we have mentors, right? We have, you know, hundreds of mentors who, I don't know exactly how many, but we have a lot of mentors and they're trained in the training that they go through, I would see you one-on-one. If they have those kinds of questions and concerns, we don't ask them to take it upon themselves to intervene or have those conversations. We ask them to go find an administrator or a staff member to share what a student might have said to them, or if they see something that makes them uncomfortable, or gives them pause in the hallway or a bathroom, you know, we ask them to seek out an administrator or an adult, school staff member to share that information with.
Do the kids in middle school and high school trust the administrators and the teachers?
I hope so, and that is always our goal, right, is that they...
Yeah, I know it's a goal.
Yes. I guess I can't speak to every single one of our hundreds of staff. I guess all of our students, you know, trust every single one, but yes, we have teaching assistants, lunchroom supervisors, you know, just all kinds of staff members that we hope that our students have a connected adult, that they, if they're in trouble or something is happening, that they have someone at the school that they can go to and talk to about that.
So why do you need an SRO?
So, we need SROs. I mean, our SROs are not counselors, all these other things that you're talking about. Our SROs are there to provide another, just a safe presence. They're that positive role model. They're a connected adult. They're a person that our students can go to for help, for support. When they're, we've talked about lots of things like bullying. There was a story in the news today, one of the administrators shared with me, an SRO in Milwaukee that prevented a, we don't know what that student intended to do, but a student went to the SRO and said, I know of a student who has a gun here today. And the SRO quickly intervened and was able to get that weapon out of their school. And so that is a really good example of why we need an SRO.
And we can't continue to offer this sort of services we've done and the model that we've done it. Again, this has come up, what we did kind of cutting-edge 26 years ago. We can't continue to maintain or do everything that the schools need us to do with a halftime person split between two schools. I just wanted to make one other thing, because I know, because with her, this is the sixth time I've sat in a public meeting on this topic, starting in October 1st. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about this particular topic, but there has been at least some level of discussion with, because it's the sixth time that I've been able to do this, so.
Okay. I do want to interject here. We're approaching 10 o'clock, so I'm going to ask if other people want to weigh in on this, and then if we have time, we'll come back. Mary Ellis.
So I've come up with my three things. I have three things that I just kind of want to say in terms of all of these public inputs, all the testimony, all the times you guys have appeared in front of different people. The first one is, one of the statements by the Board of Education really resonated with me. They said that this program was needed because we almost lost control of our schools. That hit home with me, when that person said that. The second piece, which I thank Jared for pushing on this last week, because it's something I didn't realize that we didn't have an answer to, which was, what part of the puzzle does the SRO play within the staff? And what I took away from that was the bridge between what happens outside of the school and what needs to be known inside of the school. I took away from that conversation that the SRO is not the answer, right? There are many people who are part of how we help our kids get through schools. There are the interventionists, there are the school social workers, there are the psychologists, and this is just one member of that group. And then the third thing that I think, what I heard a lot from the public testimony, is that not all kids feel safe amongst police. And I think that is absolutely true. It has nothing to do with the interactions with the Urbana police. But what happens is, is that there are a lot of things happening nationally. There's a lot of things, bad things, that have come about from a few police officers. There are people who have died at the hands of police officers. That is undisputable. And those issues come to people. They see that in the news. They hear that from their parents. It makes them afraid that the police are not there to help them. We have a lot of stuff going on nationally with immigration. I worry, even though I know from our standpoint that we're not there to arrest people's parents, we're not there to call up ICE and say, hey, come arrest these people. Those kids don't know that. They don't know that that's not our role, that we're a sanctuary city, that we are not going to be, you know, calling and checking on immigration status. And so this is just a caution, that it is not against our current SROs, our current police department, but we have to be cognizant of the national conversation, the national politics that are affecting our students, and how we interact with those students to try and mitigate some of that. So I do agree that the first place to start in that is having positive interactions, being able to see on a personal level, both for the police and for the students. They can learn from one another that this can be a relationship that we can work together, rather than this be an adversarial relationship. But I will be the first one to admit, if there's a cop behind me and I'm driving, I'm going to try and get out of the way, because I haven't done anything wrong, but I don't know what they're going to catch me doing. So that's just driving. That's not a school resource officer or a police person.
And that's just anybody.
That's anybody. So I want the mayor, I want the police officers and the chief and the school board to really think cautiously. I think that the first person who came up and testified today was talking about reflecting on our behavior, figuring out how that's impacting people and what their perception is and what ideas they're coming into that relationship with. So that, those are my three things. You probably counted more, but those are my three.
Any other comments? Eric.
I have really tried to think about this topic this week and reflect on all of the input on both sides of this. I totally agree that the schools reflect a society in which there is racial injustice, economic injustice, and poverty. And SROs will not solve that. In fact, nothing, the school, I mean, the school can mitigate that. The school can help students understand that and help staff understand that, but, you know, we could chip away at it little by little. But if we could solve those problems nationally, we probably wouldn't need police anywhere. But I think that people need to look at the Urbana Police Department. I'm sort of echoing what Mayor Marlin said, but I want to say that I agree with it very strongly. We have an exceptional police department. It's a mistake to judge the Urbana Police Department by bad things that have happened elsewhere. I have looked at the literature, at the research literature on SROs in the schools, and if you average all the results, if you just look across the board, you could definitely make a case that they don't do any good. But the variation from community to community is extraordinary. In some places, they don't work at all, and in other places, they really make a very positive contribution. And what seems to be key to making a positive contribution is to have a very clear memorandum of understanding between the school district and the city, the police department, and for the police department and the school cultures to really be consonant with each other, and to really revolve around trying to solve problems rather than to find miscreants. To me, what you're presenting to us sounds as though it has the ingredients of success, and especially given the long history of success of the SROs in the schools under the less formal arrangements that have pertained so far. I'm very, very glad that we're going to have a two-year review for two reasons. One is, then we really will know what we're talking about, because we're going to shine a lot of, you know, light on everything that has happened and not just be anecdotal about it, but because if this works as we hope it's going to work, it can be a model for how to do it. So I will vote to support this agreement.
Bill.
Yeah, Mary Ellis took two of my positions. She said them a lot better than I would have, so thank you for doing that. And Eric took the other one, basically, but I'll add a couple of things to what Eric said on the research. I did see, one common thread was keeping discipline separate from criminal issues, and I think we've gone over that several times, and that was one common thread that made programs more successful. Another common thing I saw in the research was oftentimes, reports of crimes might go up, but the consequences of the crimes will go down, because, so there's more minor crimes reported, because there's an officer in the school, somebody to report it to, but the officer also understands the backgrounds of the juveniles better. It's not some police officer coming in off the street that doesn't know the person, so the consequences and the charges end up being lower, and that's another common thing I saw in several other research papers. As far as the piece of the puzzle, I think that's important, too. The gentleman that said, what is it you're trying to fix? I think it's all those things. There are gang affiliations and factions in our school and in our community, so we do need tools to address that. I think Tori Exum made that, Exum made that point during the school board, too, that it's just one piece of the puzzle. And I've seen numerous, probably over a dozen, letters, really thoughtful letters in support, and a number of letters opposed, and so it's something that I think we've all thought a lot about. And we've, you know, it's just one of those things that you think a lot about, you do the research, and you don't see the harm that a lot of people see. I understand definitely the aversion to seeing guns in schools, seeing guns anywhere, but at the same time, put yourself in the position of the police officer and imagine an emergency situation being without the tool that you've trained with to solve that situation, not being able to do anything. And I think looking at it from that perspective helps explain why they would want to carry their gun. So I, yeah, between all those things, I'm going to support this, and I really appreciate all the input that everyone's provided to us, and it's not an easy decision. I think it's, you know, something that I would have probably spoken against it at one point 10 years ago, I think, seeing how things work and appreciating the value that our police force has brought to this and the training and everything, and doing the research, is probably maybe more willing to support this.
Dennis.
Yeah, I'm going to be supporting it, too. I mean, I really do appreciate the community that's come forward and talked about the philosophy of the health culture of our schools. And I think that there are in-place professional people in the school system already to address a lot of that, when we have the long list that Superintendent Tatum has given us about restorative practice facilitators, student intervention officers, school counselors, student engagement advocates, student relationship officers, assistant principals and associate principals, clinical professional people and CITs. These people did not exist in my high school, not in the least. And so, I mean, we have now an enriched backup for the kids who are in the schools. And the students that I talked to who experienced bullying wished that they could walk down the hallways feeling safe. And really, it is the, you know, and even Lachandra Cunningham talks about its interracial bullying that she was concerned about. It's African-Americans bullying African-Americans. And, you know, I mean, there's bullying in all races and sizes and communities, but it's not, you know, I don't think we can draft this as being African-American or people of color versus the elite white people. I think that all children feel susceptible when there is violence in the schoolyard, they see people being beat, or intimidated in the hallways, slapped on the head as people go by. These are things that nobody wants to experience. You know, when I was a junior high school teacher, you know, we were assigned to be out in the hallway to watch. out in the hallway to watch. Well, then the local teachers' union, you know, started questioning the use of that, you know, as far as like concerning the contract that we had with the school board. And that was, we were not specifically asked to do that. But the culture in the school ultimately required us to stand in the hallways and watch as the students filed by and to smile and to try to be interactive with them. So I think that this, not only are the administrators trying to take on these roles and the professional people are trying to take on the role, but it's not going to harm us to try for a couple of years to see if we can also make some headway with the SRO. And I think, as one parent told me that, you know, let's spend our money and make sure that the students feel that's safe in our hallways and in our classrooms and even in the school playground after school hours whenever possible. And I think the SRO is going to achieve like some kind of bridge. Maybe it's a missing link. We've actually heard that the administrators and staff feel that there's a missing part that could be filled by this position. So, you know, I don't think we're going to be able to solve delinquency, you know, which we hear about nationally, and also there's gun violence we hear about nationally that causes concern. But I feel that the Urbana Police Department has kind of exceeded the expectations of the general community as far as its ability, its training, and its sensitivity. And I'm hoping that if there's any problem, we do have a police review board. Citizens Police Review Board is a place to bring any questions you have about our police department that needs to be addressed in a public manner. And having known some of the members who sit on that board, they haven't had a case in a couple of years and they almost never meet. Why? Because these issues do not ever come to them because they never arise to that severity. So, I mean, there is public redress for disagreement in the police department's activities within the community. So anyway, those are things I'm thinking about.
Thank you. Dean?
I guess I should chime in and just say that my position on this has been very clear, and my position on it doesn't change. I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any final comments? One more brief comment. Sharice?
Just briefly, and I'm going to say this because I was born in Urbana. I went to Urbana schools, elementary schools, junior high schools, graduated class of '79, and I was bullied every year from kindergarten on up. And I didn't have an SRO. And sometimes I didn't have a teacher that I could talk to. A lot of times for me, it was a student teacher that saved my butt. So it's not, and to be honest, in high school, sometimes it would be the teacher doing the bullying. So, you know, times have changed. And I say this because when there is a shootout around the corner from my house, like it's the OK Corral, I cannot think that that's not going to show up somewhere in District 116. Because it started, whoever's doing it at probably one point attended District 116. And nobody wants to be a prisoner in their own home. Nobody wants to be feeling like they're a prisoner walking down the hall, going, trying to go from class to class, minding their own business. And I know what that feels like. So I'm supporting the SRO because I think that would be another step in helping some other child that's just trying to go to school do what they want to do and get there safely and get home safely. That's it. There's not always going to be somebody there when the fight starts up. For me, there wasn't. There's not always going to be somebody there when somebody's picking on you. And we always know that there's nobody there when you're getting the cyberbullying, the emails, the tweeting, the, all that stuff. But at least there'd be one more person that's got a little bit of pull. See, my teachers didn't have any pull, you know? I'd have to call my mother. So you've got someone that can actually do something in the event that it gets to be that way. And I feel sorry, and I feel sorry for, you know, there were several people, too, that I got emails from, and Mr. Guth talked about his child trying to go through high school and being bullied every day. And people kind of poo-poo that. That's serious. It affects your health. It affects your mental state, your emotional state. It affects a lot of things. You know, I taught in schools where children committed suicide behind being bullied. So if you think it's not serious, it is. It's serious. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
I think we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Absolutely, yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
We have one more item from the committee. Dennis?
I thought I retired there, but I think ordinance, lastly, ordinance number 2019-11-067, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, and this budget amendment number two omnibus, and this concerns the UPD.
Yes.
Second? Moved by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. This motion passes. Reports of special committees.
Reports of officers.
I have an announcement whenever you deem it appropriate.
Sure.
Can I do that now?
You're an officer, yes.
All right. I would like to announce on behalf of the Urbana Park District that they're having a public input meeting on Wednesday, and it's in an open house style format, and it'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the topic is they plan to apply for a PARK grant, P-A-R-C, which is a park and recreation facility construction grant. And they're looking for that money so that they could build a health and wellness center in Urbana, which is something that they've been interested in for a long time. So they'd like to just present what they're considering and get some feedback. So that's at the Phillips Recreation Center this Wednesday, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., open house style. Just drop in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, new business. We have ordinance number 2019-12-069, which was an ordinance approving a special use permit for 907 North Lincoln Avenue, the Stow Real Estate Group, Plan Case 2393-SU-19. This was moved from the special meeting of the committee of the whole with three conditions to new business. Is there a motion?
I move to vote on ordinance number 2019-12-069 for approval with the, with the
Three conditions.
Three conditions. An ordinance approving a special use permit, 907 North Lincoln Avenue, Stow Real Estate Group LLC, Plan Case 2393-SU-19.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead. You can say.
Okay, help me out here. Who did it?
I started just a half second before Mr. Jacobson.
All right. Moved by Sharice, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2019-12-070, ordinance approving a special use permit for 802, 804, 806, 808, 810, 812, 814, and 816 Clark Street, 406, 406 and a half, 408 North Lincoln Avenue. This is for the Rail Development Corporation, Plan Case 2362-SU-18.
This ordinance is a corrected ordinance. When it was initially approved back in February, the legal, the very lengthy legal description did not explicitly include Mulberry Alley, which had been previously vacated. So this ordinance before you tonight is inclusive of the entire site, which of course was the whole, the intent of the original approval.
This is the gather thing?
Yes, thank you.
Mary Alice?
So we're replacing the original special use permit with this one? Is that the goal?
Yes. So the ordinance that's before you tonight is a repeat of the other ordinance with all of the conditions and everything. The only change is the legal description.
So the other one is null and void. I'm just curious how that works.
Yes. That is, we don't have like amended special use permits. It's basically a new one every time there's a change. So what they needed, so during the closing process, it was determined that this legal description could be improved by having that Mulberry Alley. So this ordinance will provide the developer some assurances that it's included in the approval.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Dennis?
Well, no, I could make a motion.
Okay.
I approve it. I think we should have included this earlier, and, you know, we're just doing some paperwork to make a correction. So I move that ordinance number 2019-12-070, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 802, 804, 806, 808, 810, 812, 814, and 816 Clark Street, and 406, 406 and a half, and 408 North Lincoln Avenue, a rail development corporation, Plan Case 2362-SU-18, be approved by City Council.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes, I guess.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes, yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing city support for the Urbana-Champaign Community Bid Package to attract the IHSA Boys Basketball Tournament to State Farm Center. And I have misplaced my memo and resolution. Oh, here it is. As I mentioned in the memo last week, I'm recommending that we budget $7,500 a year for fiscal years 2021, 22, and 23. This money goes to the IHSA Foundation, supports the bid package. The funds donated to the foundation support statewide competitions in non-revenue generating activities, some sports and then non-sports activities like scholastic ball, some of the music and drama statewide contests. And it provides financial assistance to underprivileged high school students and to women and minorities who plan to enter the teaching and coaching profession. If you'll remember, last time a bid package was put together was in 2014. The City of Urbana pledged $5,000 over five years. This is for a shorter period of time. This is somewhat higher pledge, but over a shorter period of time. Total pledge is actually lower than what we did last time. It's been about 25 years since this tournament has been in the City of Urbana, or City of Urbana and Champaign. And the format of the tournament has changed, so it's over one weekend instead of two. And I believe it's very important to, for the city to demonstrate its support of this community-wide effort. And there will be some benefit to the city in terms of hotel motel tax, sales tax, and local motor fuel tax. It's difficult to predict how much. We just haven't done this in so long. With any luck and good fortune, we'll have two new hotels available for people to stay in by the time this tournament arrives here in town. So that's different compared to last time. So anyway, I strongly, I strongly support this. Yes?
I just wanted to say the other, because the other thing you said is that it also helps to fund non-revenue types of things. And maybe a lot of people don't know, that's your drama club contest, your music contest, your all-state chorus auditions that schools go participate in. But they also, when I was in high school, we had, we actually had the vocal instrument contest at Urbana one year at least. And being in drama club, we would go to drama club auditions or whatever to try to get all-state drama, the drama, I don't know what you want to call it, competition, I guess, you know? So it funds those things. And those, those types of arts, and many of you know how important music is in school. School's so important. And so are the extracurriculars that don't bring in the revenue. Yeah, the spring musical might bring in a few hundred dollars, and the fall play might bring in a few hundred dollars. But that's generally recycled into those programs that they have at school. So it helps if those programs can also get some kind of funding for their contests and their extra stuff that happens. So I'm all for this.
At one of the meetings we attended, one thing that was pointed out, that it often is the first time that kids will see the University of Illinois campus or even consider the possibility of attending school. And that was true for me. When I was 14 years old, I came down for the state science fair at the Assembly Hall, formerly known as the Assembly Hall.
That's true.
And it can change, it can change kids' lives. So anyway, is there a motion or further comment?
I had a question, but I suppose you need a motion first.
Let's have a motion and then we can continue.
I move that we, I don't know how to say this, accept resolution?
Move approval.
Move for approval of resolution number 2019-12-053R, a resolution authorizing city support for the Urbana-Champaign Community Bid Package to attract the IHSA Boys Basketball Tournament to State Farm Center. And
I'll second.
Now, Mary Alice, question?
So I'm in support of this, but I'm also curious where the money is coming from.
That will be determined when we put the budget together.
Okay. I'm also, okay, I'll just say I'm curious, which is true. I'm curious why this is not part of, say, the, we have the Arts Commission, and they have, you know, people have to come up and say, okay, we want X number of dollars for this event. This is an event. Now, it's not art, but I mean, we kind of moved and bundled all those types of funding proposals into that commission.
Correct. You're correct. The Public Arts and Culture Commission did expand the focus of that. This doesn't really fit into one of the categories that they would fund as an event. There's one other event that we provide financial support to as a city, and that's the Illinois Marathon. And that's not, that does not go through the Public Arts and Culture Commission. All the other music events like Pygmalion and Sweet Corn Festival and Folk and Roots, those have all been moved through Arts and Culture. So perhaps, Elizabeth, did you want to weigh in? As far as process?
Are we two minutes from extinction?
Yeah, we are two minutes from extinction. Can we have a motion?
I'll move to extend the meeting for seven minutes.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay.
Do you want me to comment on the process?
Sure.
I mean, since you have just indicated that we're going to support this, the actual funding wouldn't be required until next fiscal year and then the following fiscal years. So because council supports this, clearly it will be a priority for funding in the budget process.
Also, I think the last time we discussed how if, if the proposal isn't accepted, we don't pay anything, right?
Correct.
So, this is a proposal. If it is accepted, then presumably we get the extra tourism, which should generate extra motel, hotel tax, which would basically pay for itself at this level.
And I do want to thank, I just recycled Bill's resolution that he authored five years ago on this.
Thanks, I didn't notice that.
It was quite nice. Thank you.
Well, you know, I think the IHSA tournament used to be a really big thing for high school students, and I think it helps attract top athletes to the school. If maybe if they haven't been here before, their families, their friends, as well as fans that come from the schools, which include a lot of top students. So, I think you have really benefits. We benefit from the exposure. There's really nothing bad about it.
Dennis?
As I remember, one of the reasons why we lost it was that it was felt by the association or something that they wanted to look around for cheaper hotel rooms, and that was the, the jacking up of all the hotel room prices for that weekend became a burden to the community that was trying to put on the, draw people to participate.
Yeah, I'm glad you
So, how do we, how do we like address that?
Well, I can tell you, this effort is being led by Visit Champagne County, which is a very different organization than it was 25 years ago. And not only are the communities asked to provide some financial support, we're also providing staff resources as well. So, for example, our communications coordinator, Bridgette Royhans, sits on the board of Visit Champagne County, so she's participating in this effort. And then Jason Liggett, our UPTV station manager, sits on the fan experience committee. So, there are several subcommittees devoted to this effort to plan for the fan experience, for the events surrounding the main event, and working very closely with the hospitality industry, the hotels, the restaurants, et cetera, to make sure that, that they don't, that the fans have a good, positive experience in the town. And you're right, you know, it got, in the years past, one of the complaints that fans had was that the, you know, the prices were just sky-high for hotels and, you know, price gouging. So, that's not going to happen this time.
But, you know, that's determined by the hotel owners, and it has, we can't control that.
Well, Visit Champagne County works very closely with the industry.
Good to hear that.
I think we're all on board that this is a united community effort, and it's going to take collaboration across the community. So, and again, the bid package is due in mid-Jan, early to mid-January, and then a letter of support is due on December 10th from each host community. Any other comments? Will the clerk, this is a roll call? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. And a last item on the agenda is annual meeting schedule and potential rules changes. Can this wait till next time?
Well, I need some direction from council because
How much time do we have left? We have three minutes. Okay.
We just need some direction from council from the memo. I, I need to know if you're interested in pursuing some of this, because then we have to, we have to, have to change the city ordinance that sets council meetings as first and third Mondays. And similarly, it is an opportunity to get rid of a rule that we just don't need anymore because we have, like I said, in, in the second part of this, the rule on, resolution on resolutions has become burdensome, and we just don't need it, given our more advanced rules on, on public input. So, so I would, you know, that, that one is an easy fix. Both of these are, are quick changes if, if you, if you go that route. But I do need some impact, some input now to prepare those to bring to committee next week. Input?
Dennis?
Yeah, I'd support it. And one of the reasons is that I really want to see the sequencing of how things come from the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals or whatever, to city council, not to the city council directly, but to the committee of the whole, so that there's appropriate time for the community to catch up on what's happening, to maybe do some response, and it gives them a week to do that. And also it gives us a week to hear from our constituents. So, switching the dates of the city council meetings and the COW doesn't affect anybody but us, and we already meet anyway, so let's just make it more convenient for everybody and make it more transparent.
Mary Alice?
I have one minute. All right. The only thing that I need clarification on in terms of the proposal of the swap would be, the sentence just doesn't make sense to me about the negative impact on the whole thing about the, the Planning Commission and so forth. I know that the Planning Commission has a set schedule, and we're trying to increase the amount of time that we have to review something before it comes to a final decision, which I fully support. But can, can we extend the meeting for three minutes?
Can we have a motion to extend till 10:45?
I move to, to extend the meeting till 10:45.
I'll second.
You don't have to take all that time, though, anybody, so.
All agree?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay.
Dean's not saying aye.
Dean's saying no.
Saying nothing.
Let the record show Dean abstained.
Mm-hmm. Mum is the word.
So, I think it's in reference to there wouldn't be a, an impact on Planning Commission or Planning Commissioners as they have that set schedule. Their schedule is dependent on right now when city council meets. So, the direction tonight is also appreciated by us, because Planning Commission will need to change their bylaws to have it reflect their meeting the Thursday after the first committee of the whole meeting, instead of the council meeting, in order to make this work, so.
The time, the timing is that, that right now, if something comes directly to city council, and instead of going to, you know, this will add a, a week because it has a committee meeting in between.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, so it adds an automatic seven days to, or it, it adds that, that time period to all cases, period, whether they come to committee or, you know, per directive, or they go directly to council. It'll still be a week.
Okay, all right. It makes sense.
Jared?
Charlie, I did look through those, and I support the swap. I support the rule change needed for that swap. I support getting rid of the resolution on resolutions. I have no problem with doing the 6:30 township meeting, and, yep, that's it.
Thank you for those succinct comments. Any other comments?
The last issue is bulky items. Nobody's commented on that. Is there a magic number? You know, instead of sending out 75 pages of documents, is there a size where, where we can just simply say, go to the electronic copy? I know, you know, Eric does it for all.
Zero.
Zero is the size.
You know, but that AT&amp;T contract, for example, had lots of diagrams and whatever that probably were just not necessary to be included in the packet.
Dennis?
Yeah, well, you know, I'm just a maybe analog or old-fashioned or something like that, but I like to look at stuff. I like to underline it so I can comprehend it. I like to put tags on my thing for questions that I ask, and so I, so I like to have a paper copy. And I end up like printing my own if I have to, but, you know, maybe 20 pages be the max.
Is that a hand up, Eric? Are you stretching?
No, no, no.
Okay. Mary Alice? And then Sharice?
I agree. I write all over my stuff, and I bookmark things that I want to do. I, I think actually 20 pages is too short, because I'm looking at the entire stack of paper I have on SROs right now. The agreement itself is 18 pages. So, I, I might put the number up closer to 30 or 35 pages, maybe 30. I think 30 would have covered something like this. Or if there is something that has a huge contract, perhaps that's the limit that we should say. So, if it's a giant contract, like the AT&amp;T was a giant contract, we just needed the memo and then the ability to reference the contract. I'd be more open to that, to putting that giant contract online rather than
I could use some judgment and see
Use some judgment, yeah.
Yeah. I could use some judgment, and then we could just play with it.
Well, and also, if we, if we, I'm sorry.
Sharice?
If we, like, I liked having the paper too, but the other thing is that if, I've asked Charlie, I'm always asking Charlie to print stuff out for me. So, I, I feel, I feel comfortable that if, let's say you put a number of whatever pages are on there, if I real, if I feel like I really need it, I'll ask you to print it out for me, and I'll pick it up.
Yeah, and, you know, yeah, we're getting the packets out pretty consistently on Thursdays. And, and so, you know, you'll, you can see it that night electronically, and, and just let me know Friday morning, and I can have it in, in the packet before you pick it up Friday.
Because I don't want my eyes going blind looking at a computer screen all the time. Let me be honest.
Yeah, I think use judgment. I think the other, I mean, if there's, if there's a short memo and a long document, at least include the memo with a big flag that there's additional stuff online or something. I just don't want to miss anything.
Yeah, I agree.
And if there's nothing, but if, if the whole document's going to be online, be sure to put one page in the packet so that I go look online, because I don't always look online. I'll pick up the packet first usually.
Any other direction for Charlie? Okay, well, with no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.